...that are on the agenda. Do we have anyone who wishes to make comment tonight? Nope. Oh, Jesse. That's fine.
Hello, Council. My name is Jesse Hill. I live at 2995 Chase Street. Also own 3001 Chase Street. Appreciate the opportunity for, uh, come up here and talk to you before the study session. Hopefully I had opportunity, uh, to take a look and read the email and little kind of quick packet I sent you regarding East Wheat Ridge setbacks. It's really more directed at staff and moving a process forward. And I think it's a good step we got coming up here if we can add that to the planning process out there. Um, but I'm really here to talk about why that's important to have staff direction out there to focus on up and coming areas in Wheat Ridge. There are real issues. This isn't a single property issue. This is a community issue that we've got out there. Uh, you know, just for that property of 3001, um, two owners gave up on frustration after they talked to architects, looked at designs for building the house, moved away. And, and staff might not notice that. It's one of those unseen, forgotten man, and they just will, you know, nope, this ain't for me. Move away, leave when they've got there and kind of leave with their dreams. And we end up getting stuck with a housing stock that really needs improvement. Um, same could be said for the northeast corner. Uh, they moved. They've got a second kid on their way. Um, when they had a brother who was an architect look at it, start looking at the code like, man, you don't want to go through all that hassle and the timelines. You know, kids come up quick and, uh, like, yeah, I don't have the effort, time headache to go fight that for a couple of months. Um, I'm just gonna find a new house in Nevada, you know, and move up there. And it's unfortunate. They're great young energetic community members we had there. Um, southeast corner of, I'm referring around 30th and Chase, similar reasons. He's a, someone of older gentleman, but he's probably gonna move because it's, he'd like to see a little upgrades to the house. But again, afraid of what he adds on. It's gonna, where he, how the house is set up, it's, it's gonna get too much headache and too worse to, to move on there. And it's unfortunate because again, they're houses that might not have been, um, built when they were built 90 years ago, up to the codes and standards we have today. And we've got an opportunity really to improve that stock, but it starts at planning. But even before building, uh, department out there, planning's where it is. So, um, again, I appreciate, uh, the time and effort to focus in there. Definitely put some attention on the, uh, accessory dwelling units. New communities are putting those in houses. We got more than enough opportunity here. Wheat Ridge do that. A lot of people are interested in tiny homes and little things like that. We can fit those into our community. And the fears that you have around the accessory dwellings, um, they're really happening today. And we're just gonna make a better scenario and give people true opportunity. So, thank you, Council, for the time. Again, please direct staff. They'd love to hear it and, uh, have some focus moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, I believe staff is going to be looking at that area. They're gonna be studying it. And we, as a council, will be looking at possibilities. So appreciate you bringing it forward. Yes.
Add it to a future agenda item by Mr. Starker and I?
Uh.
Per the council rules?
Yes, you can.
Yes. You already did.
I believe you already did.
Yes, it's, it'll be, it'll be coming up at a future study session.
Any idea when?
Um, the short answer is no, but it shouldn't be too long.
Cause I would, you know, to save some time, if we could put it on maybe on a regular business meeting.
Well, I think what I'd, what I'd really like to do is to have staff have enough time to be able to sort of go through the issues and then, uh, and then bring it, uh, you know, bring some, bring some recommendations back to us so we can handle them at a study session. And, uh, Mr. Goff and I will be going through that, that schedule tomorrow.
Okay.
So I'll let you know.
Okay. Further public comment on items that are on the agenda tonight? Okay, thank you.
Name's Charlie Myers, M-Y-E-R-S, 3620 Otis Street, District One, Wheat Ridge. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in support of proposed 2015 Bicycle Pedestrian Improvement Plan. That's item number three. All the projects listed should go far in improving safety and many improve connectivity within Wheat Ridge into other communities as well. Uh, as Secretary of Bike Jefco, that's an advise, it's an advocacy organization for bicyclists in the county. I'd like to mention how Bike Jefco strongly supports the first project on the list, which is the addition of shoulders and signage along 32nd from Wadsworth to Kipling. Uh, Bike Jefco had focused on its efforts on the Young Field to Golden section, uh, since the fatality of a bicyclist there about eight years ago. However, more recently Bike Jefco discussed extending the shoulders through Wheat Ridge. So this project is great to see on the priority list and will be an important development in improving safety for both bicyclist and driver. Uh, this street is a good choice. It is so heavily used by bicyclists. In fact, uh, data from an app called Strava that maps and documents a bicyclist ride indicates this is a major conduit between Denver and Golden. We are also quite interested in improving access and connectivity, uh, to the gold line. So we would like to work with Public Works, um, in the future on such projects. Uh, now switching hats as a Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team member, uh, very interested in safety. Uh, we are very pleased with the plans for an upgrade of the crosswalk at Montessori Compass School at 44th Avenue near Miller. Uh, I spoke at the study session December 15th on the accidents occurring during November and had hoped that a newer generation type crosswalk device would be considered. Um, one that could prevent even an impatient or distracted driver from speeding through, uh, the intersection or rather the crosswalk when a, a person is walking through. So again, uh, we're pleased with the listing of the upgrade as a priority project and appreciate also the dispatch in addressing this problem. Uh, there, there's not time to mention all nine projects, but I can say that most of them all would receive our support as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Adam Wiley, W-Y-L-I-E, at 9865 West 35th. Uh, I am here speaking on behalf of the Active Transportation Advisory Team. And I do wanna thank staff and city for considering, uh, the items, uh, number three on the agenda, which are the bike pad infrastructure improvements for 2015. Uh, we, uh, they all, they all make a lot of sense. These are all issues that have come up in surveys and, and, uh, anecdotal discussions throughout the community, uh, safety and, uh, issues that Charlie mentioned specifically at Miller and 44th. But, uh, just with one tweak. So we're looking at the, I think, improving the connectivity with Denver via 35th Avenue instead of 32nd Avenue. Not that that rules out improvements along 32nd. And I'm just speaking about the eastern section of 32nd. So moving that connectivity up from 32nd to 35th between Sheridan and either Pierce or Teller, uh, I think would, would help us connect with the Bicycle Boulevard going in next year from Denver, uh, as well as utilize Pierce Street bike lanes, connect us with St. Parks and, and, uh, Active Adult Center as well. So, um, I think, uh, but it's a great opportunity this year with the paving that, uh, to, to, to put, put that infrastructure down on 32nd. Um, so there's just a slight tweak. Overall, I think it's a great plan. Um, you know, it, it does jive with the Bike Pad Master Plan. It improves the safety. It creates, uh, five more miles of dedicated facilities. And also matches the, like we said, the community survey, uh, the top four of which were improved neighborhood access to Clear Creek Trail, which is in there, improved non-vehicular access to schools, sidewalk, sidewalks along 38th Avenue. There's a piece in there as well. And then the bike lanes on 35th between Sheridan and High Court. So that's in that Teller neighborhood. Um, I'll hit. Thanks.
Thank you. Please.
I think I'm shorter than Adam. Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Rachel. Oh, yep. Can I give it to you when I'm done reading from it? Okay, cool. Uh, so my name's Rachel Hultin, H-U-L-T-I-N. Um, I am here tonight, uh, as, as always, wearing multiple hats. As an officer for the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team, I just have to say, uh, what a delight it was to sit down on Saturday and review the budget package and see all the opportunities that the city's investing in. Um, last year it was great to see Pierce Street happen, but it was, it was one facility on one side of town with one modality. This year, um, the proposal addresses bike and pedestrian and improves safety for all community members. It's across our community and through our community. So that type of regional connectivity shows that Wheat Ridge is really, um, trying to invest smartly with the resources that it has. Um, I want to recognize that by funding the, um, high priority items one, two, three, four, and six, and medium priority item one, um, Wheat Ridge is going to be investing in our community's health. Um, they are going to be, uh, being responsive to our survey that we conducted last summer. Um, and they're gonna be demonstrating the importance of regional connectivity. Um, we're, we're right in the middle of a lot of active communities. So when we create those connections, we're not just making five miles of bike lanes, but we're connecting with hundreds of miles of bike lanes. Um, so thank you for your leadership and vision around that. Um, I'm gonna, oh, I want to mention really quickly. I think Adam didn't mention, uh, it's really important to make that connection from 35th to 32nd and Wadsworth. So if you review that, just, uh, please note that that's really important, that we don't have bike lanes that aren't connecting. And then also wayfinding signage is a really great way of taking that investment and connecting cyclists and pedestrians with our commercial centers and our community and cultural centers. Um, so we encourage city to take a look at wayfinding signage that makes those connections. Um, now I'm gonna put on my mom hat. Um, and, uh, so I, I lead a walking school bus every Tuesday morning that uses that crosswalk on 44th Avenue in which a pedestrian was, was hit last November. Um, two of my walkers are in the room. Kayla and Michael, do you want to raise your hands? They're awesome. Um, so, so we, we cross with kids on that crosswalk on a regular basis. And, um, improving the signaling will make a huge difference. Um, investing in making that safe, I think the signal is, it was a really good way of doing it. Um, we, we would like to continue the conversation with the city around, uh, evaluating a school zone through there. Um, there are, uh, I think I calculated about 650 students that attend Compass and Golden or Mountain Phoenix. And, um, there's, there's a lot of, of traffic that goes through there, and there are a lot of people on foot and on bikes. Um, and they're our most vulnerable population. So, um, we hope that as you improve that signaling, that we also look at reducing the speed to a, a school zone through there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, what else would like to speak on items that are on tonight's agenda?
My name is Melissa Santarath. I live at 4085 Depew Street. Um, as she mentioned, I do the walking school bus with her through Compass Elementary. My kids both go to school and I regularly walk with them. And, um, it's a very busy crosswalk. And when you hit the button on it, nothing really happens in terms of slowing traffic down. And I, um, one thing that we do need to do is when we walk out there, we have to literally raise our hand and walk out into traffic to stop the cars to allow the kids to go by. So I think it's a huge safety issue on that, um, crosswalk. And I wanted, um, and I also agree with this school zone. I'm not sure if that's on this agenda tonight or not, but the school zone is, it's pretty important there because cars just fly through there and don't even realize when pedestrians are crossing the crosswalk. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. Brink, didn't, uh, Council talk about the, the school zone? I think there was a few people that were in favor of looking at that and studying and see how much it would cost. Have we done anything on that?
Uh, no, that's in the report. There's a little, that's something to move forward.
Right. We have that in the report with the cost and all the, uh, options with that. So yeah, we can move forward with that if, uh, Council likes to do that.
Anyone else wish to speak tonight on items that are on the agenda? Okay, I think we can move ahead with the meeting, starting with the discussion on Seniors Resource Center, BDZ Agreement Extension. Patrick, do you have?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, before you tonight is, is a request, um, from the Seniors Resource Center for, uh, a, a business development zone agreement. Um, Senior Resource Center is in a multi-phased, uh, improvements, uh, improvement to their, uh, facility here in Wheat Ridge. Um, they, uh, did a major, um, uh, expansion, um, several years ago. And the city did approve a BDZ agreement at that point. Um, and BDZ, um, agree, uh, program, uh, abates and, and waives or reimburses actually, um, building use tax fees and building permit fees. Um, for the phase one project, uh, the city did waive a hundred percent of those fees. And I believe it was, um, around a hundred thousand dollars at that time. Senior Resource Center applied for phase two, which is going to include a, um, major remodel of the older portion of their building. Um, I think there's a, um, specific detail in your packet on exactly what that entails. Um, they were planning to do that in 2013. Um, the BDZ agreement was approved by City Council on June 24th, 2013, um, for a hundred percent rebate of the building use tax and building permit fees. It was about 22,000 at that time. Senior Resource Center, um, ran into some, uh, a few obstacles. Uh, the, uh, cost of construction, uh, increased substantially in 2013. So they didn't have enough funds to finish the phase two. So they had to, to put the project on hold, um, to raise some additional funding, which they were able to do. Um, the, the project costs went from about a million to a million four for this phase two of their, uh, rehabilitation of the building. So the, the agreement that was approved by City Council back in, um, June of 2013 expired, um, on, in December of 2013, um, before the project could start again. So they've requested that, um, City Council consider this, uh, BDZ agreement request again. And at this point, since the project, uh, value or construction cost is now up to 1.4 million dollars, a hundred percent rebate of building use tax and fees would be approximately, uh, 38,000, I believe. Um, in the meantime though, just, just some background information for Council. Since the phase two BDZ agreement was approved with, um, uh, Senior Resource Center, Council did make some changes to our BDZ programming. Um, and the rebates are based on the amount of that investment that is made into a project. And it's capped at 75 percent. So the original, uh, agreement with Senior Resource Center again was a rebate of a hundred percent of the, of the, of the taxes and fees. But since that time, City Council has, um, changed the BDZ, uh, ordinance to, um, cap the total rebate to 75 percent. So there is that one thing Council may want to consider. Otherwise, we do have, um, some Senior Resource Center, um, folks in the audience if you have any questions for them. Um, and I'm available for any questions also.
So the question before us is to determine whether this, that the project does qualify for BDZ funding as well as the amount of that funding, since we have in the interim put together some stipulations that we did not have priorly made. Mr. DiTullio.
So what would be the amount if we went to the 75 percent on, so the hundred percent of the, so 38,000 would be the total at a hundred percent, correct?
Correct.
So what would be the amount at a hundred perc, or 75 percent?
Well, pulling up my calculator here. If somebody can be quicker than.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
Twenty-eight, five would be 75 percent.
Basically then would be 10,000 that they would pay roundabout.
Correct.
Versus 38,000.
Correct.
Plus the original was at 22,000 at a hundred percent. So there's, they would still be getting 6,000 more, more or less.
Correct.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm a little confused because it's, it, when I read the ordinance that we, that we passed on this and we revised on this, it's pretty clear to me that it was a measure that was designed to induce and, and help businesses that are bringing sales and use tax to our community. I mean, when you read this and, uh, the whole intent of it was to, um, was to incentivize, uh, you know, tax, taxable businesses or businesses that collect taxes. And while I certainly appreciate the work that the Senior Resource Center does, and I think they do a great job, and I'm glad to have them particularly in, in District One, I'm not sure that the work that they do really qualifies for this program. And that we would be sort of outside of our jurisdictional authority to approve it, so.
Um, Mr. Starker is, is correct in the sense that the original intent of the BDZ program was, um, to encourage the, um, development of sales tax generating, um, establishments in the city. Um, but also there is a clause in the, in the, in the ordinance that states, or that fills a public good, um, public good or need. Um, also City Council did change the program, um, a few years ago to allow for an out for City Council that, um, by a two-thirds, I believe, uh, majority vote, Council could, um, overrule the, um, initial stipulations of the BDZ program. So I believe, um, both times that, uh, the other two agreements were approved. It was, it was unanimously. So that met that, it met that stipulation.
Actually, Mr. Goff, when we revised the agreement back there, we deleted that provision that three-fourths of the City Council could, could make an exception. And that would be in, uh, Article 22 dash two, nine thirty-one. Get this right. Looks like three C or five C.
Sorry, I'm, I'm getting used to going paperless here. So it's taken me a while.
I'm sorry. I can't give you the, the page.
Would it be in this?
Right about section 22, nine forty-two.
Yeah, and, and, and I guess the copy I did provide you, there is, it is struck out, um, that section. You are correct.
What's the number again?
In section 22, nine, ninety-one.
Okay, right here.
Twenty-two, nine, eighty-one.
Yeah, it's at the very end.
However, the, you know, the, the ordinance, I think the program still does allow, um, or for public, a public good, a public use. So that, that is also in there that Council could consider.
Didn't this previously carry an eight, zero vote of Council relative to the same issue in 2013?
Fourteen.
Before we changed the ordinance?
But we didn't change the ordinance relative to it being a public good. That element remains, does it not?
Need to read the ordinance.
But I would assume that, the, the, I think the issue at hand is whether or not Senior Resource Center falls under that element of a public good, which is an element that remains in the BDZ program. That doesn't necessarily change anything. If it was previously voted unanimously, that would, that would, I don't see what changed.
Mr. DiTullio.
Well, I think there's two issues here. One was the ordinance was changed not to allow the 75 percent or the super majority to override the, the code. But I think what Mr. Urban is saying is that the, the resolution or the ordinance to allow them to have the, uh, return of funds passed eight, zero. And so the time just ran out because of their, of the, of the issues with timing. So, um, I think it'd be in poor taste to come back now and say, well, you can't have it because time ran out. And although we do have the cap on there now at 75 percent, so I still think that we should let it come forward as the 28,500 versus the 38,000 and then have it on the dais and vote on it. Because, uh, it does do, it does serve a public good in the city of Wheat Ridge. Plus, as those folks come in to do the work and those people are coming in to take care of their families, they're spending money in the city shopping. It's similar to when Council awarded the, uh, the tip to a presidential development 30th and Depew. You're bringing people in rather than saying it's gonna generate retail sales tax. So that's why it talks about the, the public good of serving the seniors. So I wouldn't have a problem with coming forward at the 28,5 with the 75 percent.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I, um, I agree with Councilman DiTullio that this is, this serves a public good. However, it's almost not the point because this was not the intent of this from the very beginning. So I wonder if there is a, another way that we could, uh, provide them with some relief, um, that does not continue this wrong precedent. For example, if we now can do 75 percent, uh, how about if we split the difference and give them 37.5 percent? And maybe give it as a gift, not under this, uh,
BDZ.
Yeah, not under this, this particular, uh, plan.
So I hear you. What I'm understanding is that you feel as though the qualifications under BDZ are not perhaps appropriate for this application. And you would like instead to make technicality sort of a donation of some reasonable amount?
Right. I agree with you, but it isn't appropriate under, under our intent. This does not serve our intent.
Okay.
On the other hand, it is a public good.
It is a public good.
Is it not in the BDZ program that a public good is a qualifying exercise?
It is. Yes, I think he's acknowledging that.
That would be a, an intended intent of the program is to assist a public good. I, I don't understand how it could not be if that's in the, in the program definition.
You know, if I, if I could refer to section 22 dash nine zero, the uses enumerated, uh, for the use of it. And it says, "The uses to which the eligible city fees, charges, and taxes may be put by the applicant shall be strictly limited to those which are approved by the City Council and relate directly to the development or redevelopment of the business within the city, which development or redevelopment businesses will generate more municipal sales and use tax revenue for the city in the future."
Mm-hmm.
So is this going to generate more sales and use taxes in the future?
Maybe not.
That's, to me, when we look at how the funds are going to be used, we would need to, you know, that would be the use to which the funds are being applied.
But it doesn't relegate it to a direct. It may be indirect that this creates more sales and use tax within the city by the, the entity being within our city and not being somewhere else. So not necessarily the Senior Resource Center is generating those sales and use tax, but by this entity being in the city, it is thereby indirectly causing that to occur based on their entity being here versus somewhere else.
I don't think that's strictly limited to those uses. I mean, that may be some.
But those elements didn't change relative to the previous vote that you were a part of.
Well, if we're, you know, if we're gonna go back and, and, and say they, you know, they want to have the 22, seven or whatever the previous number was, but that wasn't the, that wasn't the request. And now we're, we're re-authorizing this under the regulations that we work under. And that's all I'm trying to figure out. Maybe, you know, that we work under, that's all I'm trying to figure out, maybe, you know.
But those elements.
Mr. Fitzgerald, you know, has a valid point, that if we want to create an incentive for this group, then I think I think maybe legitimate, but I'm not sure that the BDZ is the vehicle whereby we're authorized as a council to do it.
I've had Ms. Davis over there who's wanted to speak for some time.
So I I agree with all of what's being said as far as, you know, does it completely match the intent of the BDZ? It is a good for our city, but I also, and I know we had an eight-zero vote, but I also know there were a couple votes that we had turned people down. So I think that's the other thing where, you know, it's, I mean, if we have a policy, if we, you know, that we need to try to be consistent with that policy, I think one of them was the one right across the street when they asked for some additional sales. I think also Jefferson County Schools, didn't we say no to Jefferson County Schools too? So good news is I do kind of have.
Library, Texas library.
Yeah, so I do kind of have this little iron brain sometimes. So I think that's, you know, I think it's not only about the greater good, but I also think that Mr. Starker has a point that, you know, it should it be under this because there's a couple places that are still greater good, you know, could create, you know, things in our city, et cetera, et cetera. But there's been similar situations where we've said, doesn't meet it, no. So I just want to throw that out as another consideration as we go through this process.
So you're suggesting we look at each each application individually as we have done in the past?
Well, and I think the thing is, is we can historically say, well, it was an eight-zero vote, but I can also historically say, there's a couple votes that went down that we did not give this to that could probably have a very similar argument to a greater good for the city. So, you know, I mean, to me, I kind of roll black and white, and so it's, you know, a consistency thing there as well, so.
Madam Mayor? Let me see if somebody else wants to speak.
I'll so I I remember when this came through, I remember when the first hundred thousand came through, and I guess what I think we should be very clear about is we've given them a hundred thousand dollars on the project, and while I support everything that they do, they've gotten for for a project that doesn't provide sales tax generation, and I could almost argue because of its location that even the people that come in may not always shop in our area, there's not a lot of retail on that side of town, and a lot more of it is across Sheridan or down Sheridan near Edgewater. So so the benefit of people coming into Wheat Ridge, depending on where they live, if they're coming from the west end of town and would head back that way, then I could see where that could be that sales tax generator. But if they're coming from the east end or the south, and they may not necessarily stop and shop in Wheat Ridge. But the other part of it, I mean, fundamentally to me is that we've given them a hundred thousand dollars in a rebate, and and that was the first BDZ. We agreed the second BDZ, and it didn't go through, but even at the time of the second one, we were arguing, I mean, I think we've had discussion for several years about what a BDZ is and and coming up with criteria for it so that we can vote on it fairly and equitably every time. And I guess I'd say if you if we really want to, we could bring it to the dais, and it's either voted up or down based on everybody's opinion of whether or not it fits this this criteria to the best of it, you know, of our intention. And if it does, it'll pass, and if it doesn't, it doesn't, but it would be treated equally to in the same manner of any other application that came to us.
And Mr. Pond?
Well, I appreciate Tracy refresh my memory a little bit because actually, I think although we voted on this in in support, I do recall, and even in this discussion, that we were we were trying to wrap our hands around our brains around whether or not it was the right tool for the job. So I recall that, you know, and obviously, we we did at that time, but I also believe that we moved forward at that time as as Tracy articulated and started to look at some other some of the other tools because it was right around that time we had a bunch of things going on, and we didn't have a consistent way of applying them, and we started to become concerned about that and and started to do some things. And I think that's the context in which, you know, that that this that those actions, you know, took place. So I don't disagree that this is a public good, an important resource in the community at large, and certainly on the on the east side, so I'm not I'm not saying that we shouldn't be supportive, but I do agree that looking at the processes and whether or not we're using the tools, the right tools for the right things is is important in this case. And I think I might even agree as we as we look at this to to look at what we've already been support at what level we've already been supportive, and what is that, how should we considered that at this at this time? So I don't know how it comes forward, whether or not it's, you know, it has to be delayed in some ways to to look at other tools, or we need to accept it just coming up to the dais for for debate and and vote, but I do I I agree that we we had some we had some debate about about the tool, and and we should resolve that before we finish this.
Mr. Urban had his hand up.
Thank you. This may be a question to Patrick. Is not the real property owned by the Senior Resource Center defined as a Wheat Ridge Business Improvement Zone?
Yeah, the whole city is a business improvement zone.
But that says in the resolution that it was that that specific property was defined as a.
It was initially, but I think after the fact, then City Council designated the whole city as a business development zone.
And to to the point that we have given the Senior Resource Center X number of dollars, we're not giving them money in this situation. What we're doing is we're rebating and and waiving certain fees in a way to encourage the the services that they're offering to us, and and that's allowed with within this program, and that had not changed since the members on council that are currently here voted eight to zero to do the exact same. Nothing has changed within that in that program relative to that that aspect. So you're now taking the opposite stance that you took to vote to approve this.
That that's allowed, so.
I know it's allowed, but I wanted to make clear that that's what's happening because I I don't understand that.
But it.
Ma'am, I'm not speaking to, you know, speaking to the members of council. Thank you. I I don't understand how we wouldn't honor the the same agreement relative to a change in the date of the agreement that the Senior Resource Center is asking us to do in a sense, is just to extend that agreement that was originally offered to them under the same elements of the program that have not changed. That to me would mean nothing to us materially. We would just continue as we have been. It's not changing the intent of the program, it's not changing anything relative to any other decision that we make, but it is honoring the agreement that you all previously made and not going back on that and saying, oh, now we think of it differently. It's the same elements of that program.
I've got a couple. Mr. DiTullio, you had your hand up earlier.
So I would I would disagree with some of your comments, mostly because marijuana passed as a retail establishment, and just recently, we went back and revisited, and some people who had voted to pass it voted to limit it. So it is at our discretion through time to make those decisions. I'd also say that in June of two thousand thirteen, things were different than they are now, and I understand that this is not a giveaway of money, it's not, they they owe it, we collect it, we either rebate it or we don't. But financially, we always have to be very aware of what we give away, and prior to so in two thousand thirteen, when they came, we didn't have the Sprouts money going out. We didn't have for the Sprouts development, we didn't have the was this after the King Supers or before the remodel?
I'm sorry, I can't.
I can't remember, but I'm thinking that King Supers happened after, so a lot of a lot of things have changed since the two thousand thirteen. We'd we'd made an agreement, but then we've had other people coming and and people that are generating revenues asking for money. I'm not saying that if it came to the dais, I would necessarily vote it down, but I agree that maybe, you know, on reflection and time spent trying to craft a BDZ document that really helps us make the best decisions, is this the best possible way of supporting them? I think that's what several of the council members have said at this point, is this the best way to support them? And it's not that we don't want to support them, and we find other, you know, there's other avenues that we support them through. So I would just, I don't believe it's fair to state that we as council, one, don't have the right to change our opinion because we do. And the circumstances between our original decision now are different, and now we have a better document to make those decisions, and I think that to say anything different than that is very unfair to those of us who who sit up on this dais as councils change over time. I just I don't I don't know that I agree that this is the best method to give them the money, not if if what we're trying to do is really build up businesses.
And I would.
No. All right, let me read something that Patrick has handed. Approval of the BDZ agreement shall be given by the City Council at a public hearing held as a portion of a regularly scheduled City Council meeting, notice of which has been published in a newspaper of general circulation at least seven days prior to the hearing. The council's approval of a BDZ agreement shall be based upon the identified need or value in the community or increased employment based upon the following criteria. Should I go through all those?
No, that's I just want to make sure that's that's the most current version, which may not be in your packet, but this is actually from the municipal codes. I just want to make reiterate that it does allow you to base it on sales and use tax generation, investment in the community, or increased employment, so.
Okay. I'm going to have to go with him since you passed the other time, and then we'll come back to you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I think generally, everybody here supports the idea that it's a public good, and a lot of us here seem to be supporting the idea that it's not really an appropriate use of BDZ. So I'm wondering if there is support here for finding some alternative way. So would would somebody like to speak to whether or not they would support finding an alternative?
Mr. DiTullio?
So first of all, just because a vote takes place on one project that approves or denies, it doesn't set a precedent for anything in the future. You can other projects can come and go in the in the in the future, and they can, there's no precedent. So whether this passed or failed, there's no precedent for future nonprofits. So I would not want to see this come to the dais as as this BDZ that fails, and that's just embarrassing for everybody. So what I would support is, for me, a budget amendment for the twenty-two five that they were originally going to get from the project, bring it in as a contribution to the Senior Resource Center, which was the twenty-two thousand five hundred, you said, or?
Yeah, twenty-two oh five, I believe.
Or round it up or round it down, whatever you want to do, but they just give them a straight donation, they pay their fees, we give them the donation, and then the BDZ is not part of the the deal. And then I would hope that that would not generate all this back and forth, is just say, okay, we're going to give them a donation of twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand, and then the BDZ is out of the out of the. So that's my recommendation, if that would solve this dilemma that we have.
Mr. Urban?
I'd just like to go back on this issue of a previous vote. I'm not suggesting that council members or myself wouldn't make a different decision at a different time with different circumstances. I just want to make it clear that a previous vote had occurred and a vote was made in a certain way, and I'm just I'm just making sure that it's clear to everybody that's what happened previously. I'm not saying you can't now vote differently, I'm just, that's what I was pointing out. I'm not saying you have to adhere to every vote you've ever made. What I'm saying is, that's the vote that was made previously, and your understanding in situations and circumstances may change to where you have a different vote this time, but just wanted to point that out, that that vote was made.
Mr. Starker?
I'd like to clarify a couple of things that Mr. Urban said and alluded to. Number one, we did vote, and we voted to approve a prior agreement that expired on twelve thirty-one of thirteen, so that agreement is null and void. Secondly, when when the staff brought this to us today for this hearing, they didn't they didn't bring a a a motion or proposal that brought that to the table. They didn't do that. They brought a different proposal to the table. In the meantime, since twelve thirty-one of thirteen, we've changed the ordinance. It's not the same ordinance, it's a different ordinance, and this ordinance very definitely speaks to the BDZ as a business development zone and talks, and the intent of the ordinance is to provide incentives for businesses that generate sales and use tax in our city so that so that the citizens recover financially from that program. So I just want to make that make that clear, that we're not we're not going back on something we did or didn't do before. We voted on that, the it it passed, that that proposal expired, but in the meantime, we've we've created different legislation. And what I'm really saying is that is that we don't, if we're if we're as councillors going to follow the ordinances and the regulations that we pass, this doesn't meet that criteria. But, you know, to another to another point, when staff brought this to us today, in the in the new BDZ ordinance is a proposal that that projects that cost more than a million dollars are funded only at seventy-five percent, but staff didn't bring that. Staff brought us that at a hundred percent. I don't know why, but that's that's also beyond beyond the regulations that we've that we've set for ourselves to follow.
Okay, it's.
So would we so would anybody agree to a twenty-two or twenty-five thousand dollar contribution to the Senior Resource Center in lieu of the BDZ?
We have two in agreement, or did you want to?
No, I wasn't, I was just asking.
Or did you ask to speak?
I think we need to be careful in the use of the BDZ as to if we have declined it in other instances like Councilman Davis mentioned, that we should be very careful as to how we're using it, and even if we do a donation, you know, is that going to open the door for another entity to request it? And it might, and it might not, it depends, but I think it's important that we look at what we've set up and how we're applying it and where we make exceptions because it's important how we apply it to to all entities, whoever they may be regardless.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I do agree that, you know, turning down one precedent and then setting another is kind of kind of a bad deal, but I think setting the precedent of giving a gift in this case is a lot easier to ignore at some future date than than doing this under the BDZ. I would just like to say, though, that twenty-two thousand is too much, in my opinion. I think we ought to split this down a little bit more, in my personal opinion. I would, since we can't do any more than seventy-five percent, even if we the other way, if we were going to do it the other way, if we split the difference, that's fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars, so that's what I would go with.
Okay, we have another one. Mr. Urban again.
I would say that the elements regarding significant employment, knowing that the Senior Resource Center has between their full and part-time employees, over two hundred and fifty employees, that that would qualify, let alone in the business improvement program, and even if we considered a donation, that would still give us plenty of cover with respect to the ability to recoup those costs, knowing that irrespective of which direction they traveled to work in the morning or in the afternoon, that they would be able to spend money in the city of Wheat Ridge. That's just, two hundred and fifty employees seems significant to me to consider covering them in the business improvement program or in just a straight appropriation.
So, Mr. Mr. Urban, you feel as though the additional employees adds to the the recommendation?
I didn't say additional, I just said.
The the basic. All right, it seems to me that the first thing we have to do is decide whether this is applicable for a BDZ agreement or not, and then make a donation, excuse me, make a determination if there's to be a donation. So I would like to get an idea of how many of of consensus and whether this is or is not a BDZ application, if it's warranted here.
Well, before we do that, I'd like to just say, I think I I agree with what's been said about the BDZ, I get that, and I do know that we approved in the past a twenty-two thousand dollar rebate, and I don't think it sets a precedent for other nonprofits to come in and say, well, it's under BDZ. I mean, it does, it could, but I don't I don't see that being a big deal. So I think the win-win would be a twenty-two thousand dollar donation to them to match what was originally approved, rather than a twenty-eight or thirty-eight thousand, and then call it, then they will pay their fees and we'll donate the twenty-two thousand, that would be. That would be my consensus. My consensus would rather be 22,000 versus the 28,000 or 38,000, because that's what they were looking at in 2013. Now that's done, I get that, and that would be the win-win, I think.
Okay, we've got two, two amounts of money, and I still don't know about the BDZ. Mr. Starker?
I would, I think, as, as Mr. DiTullio says, let's separate the question.
Let's separate the question.
And I would, I would offer a consensus that we not move forward with the BDZ application that's been provided by staff.
Do I have a consensus on that? I do. Do I? Let me see. Five. We do have a consensus on that, or enough? All right, so we've separated the two. Now, I believe the question is about a monetary donation.
I'd ask for a consensus of 22,000 for a donation.
Another number has been brought up, though, as well, so I'm gonna ask, I've not heard too much of you, so I'm gonna choose you first.
I was just gonna suggest, you had said 14, I was gonna say 15 or 16. In other words, we're not giving the full amount, it's a reduced amount. So if it was 22 minus five, you know, we could do 17 or 18, somewhere in there.
Ms. Davis?
I guess my question is, is we're just kinda throwing, you know, 22, 14, 15, you know?
No, 22 is from the original amount.
No, I know, but I, I think the thing is, is that if, I mean, I guess my question is, I'd like to maybe make a consensus that we do look at it more, but we kind of have some informa, you know, I, I need to go back through and read some of this to know, you know, to understand where and we wanna move towards this. I don't know why a consensus has to be made tonight on a dollar amount. I, I do think, I'm okay with doing the dollar amount, I'm okay with doing it out the BDZ, but I'd rather kind of, you know, just read it and, and kinda have some time to look at it, reflect back on some of the other decisions we've made, reflect back on donations, where we can come up with some of the money and that type of thing.
So you would like to hold off on that?
I'd like to post, but I don't know why we have to have an amount tonight.
Mr. Pond?
So when, if we had, if we had moved forward with the BDZ, this would have come in front of us when?
It'd have to come, it'd come back, it has to be published in a local paper seven days in advance, so it couldn't come to Monday's meeting, it would have to be the next regular meeting for a public hearing.
True, definitely.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I think I would, would agree, let's, instead of throwing numbers around, it, it sounds like everyone agrees that we should be supportive, we just need to kind of figure out what the level is. I don't see why we can't do it...
The next study session.
Well, or at the, at the council meeting that this was gonna come back to. In other words, not to lay it any further than, than the business that was, was gonna take place. This business was gonna take place two and a half weeks from now, we should be able to...
That's if it was a BDZ, because it requires a public hearing.
Well, I know, I'm just saying, let's, either we bring it back to, to that, that council meeting and, with recommendations and vote that, vote on that, or, or prior to that at a study session. In other words, I don't wanna delay it any, any further than what it would have been.
Why can't we just bring it back with a blank amount to the, to the, to the meeting, not this meeting, but the following meeting? Instead of bringing it to the study session again and just...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so, but leave a blank amount out in there, so, so you can do your research, and then the night of the meeting, someone can put an amount in there at, at the night of the meeting. Not this ninth, but the 20...
23rd.
23rd. As, it's gonna be a resolution, right? It's gonna be a budget amendment, so you just plug in the number on the, on the resolution when we go down.
I mean, I guess I don't see that any different than what we're doing here. You know, that there's really not, I mean, we can discuss it there, on the dais or at the study session, say, hey, this was my rationale. Ask these guys questions, they could come back and...
Well, here's the difference, I think you wanna know more information about, but I don't. I, I feel 20,000 or 15 or 22,000, to me, mentally works. So if everybody feels that way, bring it back with a blank amount. If nobody feels that way, except for maybe a couple, then bring it back with a number. I think, you know, Genevieve offered up a 15 to 20, you've opted up 15 or whatever, so I don't personally don't need to sit down and talk about it again at a study session over $20,000. I mean, so I'm just trying to make it, get this moving one way or the other, so that the Senior Resource Center...
All right, so what we've got on the floor is a blank amount, a certain amount, or no amount, because you'd like to study it further.
Well, and I don't wanna beat it to death like we have already.
Got it. Thank you.
We don't beat it to death.
So, let me, let me ask for a consensus at, at $15,000 as a donation.
I'm okay with... All right, we've got raised, we've got hands raised on that?
And if we, at the meeting, decide that 15,000 isn't the direction we wanna go on, you can always amend either up or whatever, right? So 15,000 is just our starting point, where we, we feel the most comfortable with, and it can go up if, on further reflection, we feel like, okay.
Do you want to do that on March 9th, or the 23rd?
Wait, do I have enough people here?
Yeah, there was a consensus.
You got six.
There's no public hearing required, well, there's a public hearing, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be posted in the paper for seven days, so we could do this on March 9th if you'd like.
Work is for me.
All right, so we're going to put a specific amount in, 50,000 more or less?
15,000 on March 9th.
Is, is that the way we're looking at it?
Yeah, Timms agrees to the, so that was his consensus, he agrees to the March 9th meeting.
Okay, are we in agreement on that? Why was that a lot? That was a good time.
Always.
Moving on to item number two. Mr. Johnstone, this is on proposed zoning code updates.
Good evening, everyone. As council, I think, is certainly well aware, we're kind of continuously looking at our development regulations to make sure they're aligned with our planning documents, and we're creating a predictable and streamlined and well-designed regulatory environment for everything that pertains to land use. Really started back in 2004, 2005, when the city commissioned the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, and one of that, amongst many recommendations, many of which are still very much living and, I think, active in, in our daily lives as a staff. But one of the real clear recommendations was that we needed to take a look at our regulatory environment and make sure that it was streamlined and predictable, and if we wanted to be successful in really repositioning the community. So we, we continued to do that. I guess last year was probably our biggest effort, was on the, a full repeal and reenactment of the subdivision regulations, to again, make it more aligned with the types of infill development patterns that we have, as opposed to greenfield types of development. Over the years, really, the past probably 10 years, we've, we've done everything from creating a, a framework where variances can be reviewed and approved administratively for up to 50 percent of a development standard. We've created it, we've made it simpler for ci, city-initiated rezonings. We've developed three new mixed-use zoning districts that we've already applied on several of our primary commercial corridors through a city-initiated rezoning. We reduced our parking requirements, we streamlined our planned development regulations, so there's really just been a number of different things that we've done over the years with, with council support. We maintain an active list of things we think are worthy of consideration for additional amendment, and in 2015, we have a list of those that we'd like to, this evening, just talk with you on a real high level, make sure our priorities are aligning, and then come back at subsequent meetings to talk more substantively about each of those. So that's, that's what we're here for this evening. Most of the amendments on the list that was included in your, in your, in your packet memo, would really fall under the, the category of, I'd say, modernization. The regulations have just kind of fallen behind the times. Our sign regulations don't deal well with electronic signs that are increasingly popular for many businesses and for billboards. Our exterior lighting recommendations really don't speak to the new LED and other lighting sources that are used more frequently than the old high-pressure sodium and metal halide. We don't, this is kind of a small one, but we don't address microbreweries, right? So we don't, when a, a microbrewer comes in and knocks on our door and asks where they could locate, we don't have a real clear answer, because our code is silent on that topic. And similarly, our cities, what we call commercial mobile radio satellites, CEMRIS, much more easily stated as cellular services, the, the stations for those, those regulations haven't been updated since 2000. And again, technology has changed dramatically in the intervening years. So that is our list of four amendments that, again, I'd kind of put in that category of not particularly sexy, but kind of a modernization process. And then the, the, the other court amendment that was discussed in the council packet was pertaining to accessory dwelling units. And that really comes from a, a city council priority of a few years ago, was to develop a housing diversification strategy. That was completed at, right around the end of 2013, and that certainly is a recommendation that comes out of, out of that process. And it's a type of housing unit that a lot of communities are looking at, several communities along the front range, including most recently Jefferson County, for unincorporated Jefferson County, have adopted regulations that allow people to do, in certain contexts, under certain rules, but have a, a second dwelling unit as an accessory unit to a single-family house. So that's another one that we'd like to took, take a look at from a policy perspective. As Mr. Hill noted in his public comments at the beginning of the meeting, he identified an issue that he thinks needs to be considered. He sent out some emails, starting last Thursday, and, you know, I'd say we're, we're certainly glad to take a look at that. I mean, I think, looking at a topic like that, which frankly, we haven't had a lot of feedback from the public that, that the issue exists, but I can see where it would. I mean, obviously, we have a lot of non-conforming lots that don't, that were platted at the turn of the previous century and don't meet current requirements for lot width. So to the extent that there are opportunities to, to encourage redevelopment of some of those lots, as opposed to just expanding on what's there, we're certainly glad to take a look at that topic for, really, I think, all of East Wheat Ridge. I know he obviously has some specific properties that he owns and has familiarity with. So we're glad to take a look at that, and would request your kind of direction on that topic this evening as well, so that we could do the necessary research in order to tee that up for thoughtful consideration by council as, as part of this overall list. So that's really my quick summary. Again, not looking for a lot of substantive discussion necessarily, but just getting a sense of making sure there's alignment on tackling that list in 2015, and if you do have things that you particularly wanna indicate our priorities to you, we certainly welcome that feedback as well.
Councilmember DiTullio?
So, I think I'll say it for the 50th time, here's my, here's my issue. So I grew up at 35th and Utica, that's where my dad built his house, and my wife and I were over there, again, checking out Stewart Street, Tennyson Street, my mom and dad's old house that he built. And almost on every block, there's old frame houses that are like in District One and District Two that have been scraped, and they have a brand-new building, a new house on it. And if you go down Tennyson, they're scraping some of the buildings that I walked by going to school for years. And so my question is, what do we have to do in this city to have that same type of action in Wheat Ridge? Because it's not happening. I, I talked to brokers, I've talked to developers, and the, the main thing is, is that it's too expensive to build here, because by the time you scrape a house and clean up the property and then try to build a house, they can't make the profit work, because the property values aren't as high in District One and Two and Wheat Ridge as it is right across the street. But, I mean, on Stewart Street, all of the houses that were on Stewart Street between 41st and 40th are gone, and they got brand-new houses. Now, I know some people don't like these McMansions and all that kind of, but if you're talking about raising the demographics and trying to raise the demographics and the, the income of the city, like the NRS talked about, because at one time we had a 70,000 median income back in the 70s, and now it's at 47,000 for a family of four, so we've gone down. And that's where retail follows that residential. What do we need to do to make our code work, so that guys like Jesse Hill, when they buy a corner lot, they can scrape it and build it, and they don't have to go through the Board of Adjustment, or they don't have to go through hoops to, to scrape a house and build a new single-family home or duplex like they've done in Denver, which is about less than a mile away. So for me, Ken, I don't care what you bring forth, as long as it makes things still safe, but makes it easier to get something done in the city. Because I know we say we're open for business, but I really don't believe, on the residential side, when it comes to getting some new housing stock, unless it's a greenfield like on 30, on Perrin's Row, we're not getting it done. I know, I know, I know we're getting some remodels, we're getting some pop tops, and, and that's great, and the Housing Authority's doing one or two houses a year, but we're not getting the bang for our buck, where we need to have, like, for example, on 38th and Dupue, from 35th to 38th, if someone offered that property owner to buy all those apartments and scrape them and build brand-new townhouses like they've done on 38th and Dupue on the corner, why can't we do it here? So there's gotta be a, a way, whether it's private investment, or we, we have, we're not giving, we're allowing them to demolish the property, you know, and demolish the properties and charging demolition fees or whatever it is. So that's what I'm looking for. That's what I've been trying to say, I'm not blaming anybody, but it ain't happened in East Asherton or West Asherton, because there's few properties that are doing it.
Mr. DiTullio, so you're looking for regulations, because so often it's market-based, but you're looking for regulations that would help us move that forward?
Regulations and public and private assistance. I, I've mentioned in the past, the Housing Authority or Manul Authority, where they buy properties, they scrape them, and they remarket them out to the, to the private sector. I, I don't know what we need, but to, to really have the city go and move forward, you have to change the demographic, and the only way you're gonna change the demographic is some of these houses down there, Richards Hart Estate and parts of District Four, or whatever it is, need to have a different demographic and a higher income level before you can attract that retail that you want, that you're not attracting in grocery stores or attracting in a Kohl's or a Cabell's or whatever it is. But, so I, I don't care what comes forth, this is great, but it's something that makes the city start to redevelop the housing, the residential side.
I just have a question, do we have zoning that prevents that kind of building?
That's my question.
Well, I, I mean, again, this has not come up as a policy issue to me, I mean, that we don't, that our zoning code is, is an impediment to people doing scrapes. I think it's a kind of a policy question as a community to say, is this something that we kind of consciously wanna encourage? And I'm not sure that we've necessarily had that conversation with council as to whether, as a group, you think, you know, the scrapes and that sort of thing that's been occurring in Denver, which, you know, I think that's, that's great, but whether that's something that we really wanna facilitate. So if that's the direction of, of, of council, I think it's, it's, it's incumbent on us, then, to take a look at, at what zoning districts don't allow that. I mean, the, the real challenge is, as Mr. Hill stated, I mean, if you have an existing lot that is smaller than what the zoning code would other, otherwise would have required if, if you knew you had zoning back in 1900, which we didn't, then, you know, it, it can be challenging for them, I think, particularly in this scrape environment, to, to rebuild with enough building, enough intensity of use on the lot that makes it profitable. Now, we have, you know, certainly the variance is kind of a one-off opportunity. When we amended the city's residential zoning regulations in 2009, we took that opportunity to reduce a number of different setbacks to try and facilitate more investment, but we didn't go as far, I guess, as you would if you wanted to really facilitate the scrapes. So I think we'll have to have more policy discussion with council, and maybe we get a little bit of that this evening, but to understand how far you'd want to go, right? Because then it becomes, it's not just about setbacks, it's about FARs, it's about, it's about lot coverage, it's about allowing, you know, much more intensive development to occur, and if so, where, right? Which neighborhoods really do you want to see that happen? So we're glad to have that discussion, but I think we're just kind of starting it tonight.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanna, I wanna sort of echo what, what Mr. DiTullio said, or some of what he said, anyway, not the whole thing. I moved into my house on 30th and Eaton Street on January 1st in 1976, and in the almost 40 years that I've lived there, there have been, you can name it on one, one hand, the number of removals and, and new houses that have gone up in that, in that time period, in that neighborhood in eastern Wheat Ridge. There was, you know, and, and the one that, the one that really comes to mind is about a year ago, a house at, at 7th and Dupue, which was about 265 square, about, is 7th and Dupue, and it was about, you know, 100, 650 square feet, was, was purchased and scraped, and there's, I think, about a 3,500 square foot or, you know, 3,900 square foot house going up that looks a lot like some of the things that happened in North Denver. And I, you know, I'm not sure that I wanna see the development, that, the same type of development. I'd like to have good quality development, but I'd like to have zoning regulations that, that make it possible for people to take some of the, some of the housing stock that has, that has passed the end of its life cycle, and be able to economically take it down and, and move new housing product in. And I guess, and I had another sort of particular question about the accessory dwelling units, and when I moved, about a year or two after I moved in, and there were a lot of R2 properties in that, in that neighborhood, in about 1978 or '79, the whole neighborhood was rezoned. Most of those R2s, unless you had one and you specifically said, I wanna keep... Most of those R2s, unless you had one and you specifically said, "I want to keep my R2," are gone. So it was all R1C as a blanket zoning. I happen to have an R2 because I've got a mother-in-law apartment in the basement. I'm concerned a little bit with accessory dwelling units. If that's going to be sort of our primary avenue to sort of increase density, I'm not sure that that's a wonderful thing to do. One of the things that, not that it's a bad thing to do, but I think we've got to be careful that we have parking, that the new dwelling unit supports the parking. I think you've got to be really careful when you start building mother-in-law suites, that you're building in separate kitchen and restroom facilities, and that the water and sewer has capacity to handle those additional dwelling units. Because, you know, and that if you've got a big enough, you know, I don't know anybody in my neighborhood that's got a big enough garage to put a unit over it, but I mean, I think you've got to be careful about, "Well, we're going to put a dwelling unit over the garage, and they're going to come into the house and use the restroom facilities, or they're going to use the kitchen in the house." And in essence, you're not building a separate unit. You're... I was going to use a term, but it's not.
Same footprint.
It's not appropriate in a public setting, but, you know, I think it's great. I think you've got a nice, you know, and I think microbrews, I don't know how you've allowed those, if they don't exist in our code, how you've been able to allow those to happen in our city, because I thought if it didn't exist in the code, that we didn't...
Well, I guess there's different levels of them, right? Like, we have a couple brew pubs, which are predominantly restaurants, but when you start entertaining something that's more at a scale where it's allowing production, that's where we don't know kind of what the answer is, right? Is that a menu?
And I think those are, you know, the other things I know that Mr. Fitzgerald has talked to me about some signage and some things that are newer and maybe need to do it. So I think this is a great list. I think if you can look at the items that were raised by Mr. Hill with respect to, you know, the particular street that he and I both live on, and I happen to live on the corner, but I've got two lots, so I'm not planning to develop them.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I think this is an excellent list, and I support the entire list. And I would like to agree that I would like to encourage renewal, and we've talked about renewal before, and that some of our older housing stock needs to be fluffed up a little bit and renewed. So I'm certainly in favor of that. My, I have a question, though, and my question is, to what extent do we control or can we control design? Because, and the reason I'm asking is because if you look at scrapes that have been occurring, what happens is you get a house that is starkly different than the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. It just, it's garish, it stands out. And I realize this is, you know, that's really a sticky wicket, but I'm asking, do we have any control of that at all?
We don't currently for single and two-family homes. The city's architectural and design manual, Architectural Site and Design Manual applies to multifamily construction, so we do have certain material requirements and other kind of architectural requirements in that document. It's certainly possible for us to control design elements in single-family and two-family if we choose to do that. Just a, not the easiest thing to do, just because it's kind of hard to regulate on design, but it's certainly possible. You know, I think the easiest things for us to do are things like, are contrail the bulk and scale. I mean, the areas that we're talking about are certainly still subject to the city's charter requirement, so the 35-foot building height, but that certainly can accommodate three-story construction, particularly the way we measure building height. You know, FAR, which is the Floraia Ratio, which controls the total amount of square footage of the building relative to lot area, is one way to kind of control bulk. Setbacks are obviously another way. So those are, that's kind of the low-hanging fruit in terms of lot coverage setbacks and Floraia Ratio. And then beyond that, it becomes a question of, you know, how important you think it is to get more detailed in terms of certain residential architectural requirements that would, you know, arguably make something more consistent with your neighbor or what's there right now.
Mr. Johnstone, I'm assuming that each one of these will come back individually?
Correct.
And so that we can work out some of these details, including the request for whatever type of zoning or what we need to do as far as scraping and getting new property on there.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. And Council, if you don't mind, I'll take somebody who hasn't spoke before. Councilmember Langworth.
I just have a small question about the sign code. I know that you're bringing it back, but you mentioned something that the last time, I think we had a discussion, became quite lengthy, which was billboard lighting and such. So will the sign code address billboards, billboard electronic lighting, or does that have to be handled in the billboard code or where we have billboards?
Well, it would be, I mean, I think that's a question or a discussion for council at a subsequent meeting, because it's not an insignificant issue. You know, when it comes to some of these, such as signs, I mean, those are, they're complicated, and they can be contentious, and we kind of want to make sure we know what you do and don't want to tackle. But we certainly have been contacted by the billboard industry and been given some helpful information, I think, in fact, about the capabilities that are there and the advantages of allowing for billboards to be LED-type of lighting. And we currently, at a minimum, we've had some concerns that there've been some existing LED signs in the city that have been potentially hazardous because they're so bright. So that is something we'd like to take a look at on some level. But yeah, there is an interest among the billboard community to have the ability to have changeable property through an LED-type of format.
But will this, so when we...
And we can do it in one ordinance, it wouldn't have to be a separate ordinance for billboards.
So it would be both for those businesses within our boundaries, and, because billboards can only be along I-70s?
Yeah, there's a B2 zone that is the only area, yeah. And we're currently at our maximum, which is 16.
I just, I mean, I just remember the great link that we discussed billboards the last time, so I'll make sure we kind of, you know...
Indeed. And there was a, well, there's some other history that kind of preceded that, so...
Let me first apologize to the council that I did not acknowledge that Mr. Zabawa is still with us, and that was previous discussion, but I want you to know, I'm pretty sure that anybody of you, any one of you can contact him in the next week or two, whatever, before we get that resolution, if there's any questions for him, and as well as thank you so much for being here. Okay, Mr. DiTullio, I believe, well, he's been itching to ask a question.
Well, no, I just wanted to, you know, I know that I may sound frustrated about this, and I really am, because when, you know, can you say that we need to have a discussion about this and a policy discussion on it? And I get what you're saying, but when you look at the NRS, the original intent of that was residential-focused, not commercial-focused, and it talked about changing and working with the housing stock in the city. And one of the things that Weavers 2020 did originally was they bought that property at 32nd and Pierce, it's that brown duplex, they scraped it, and that was a dump, I mean, I'll tell you what it was, and they built that duplex, but to get that built, they had to go to the Board of Adjustments and pay the fee, and it wasn't guaranteed that they were going to get that change. And so a developer comes in here, and I was talking to Tyler Downs over the weekend, because he bought the property at 38th and Upham, and we're running out of land that we can build on that's just greenfields. So he bought the two acres over there on 38th and Upham, and he's excited about building because it's a fresh start. But I said to him, what do we need on 38th or in the neighborhoods to get this development cycle going? And he said, basically, again, is you have to be able to scrape what's there cheaply, and they have to be able to acquire the property cheaply and then build. And so whatever we need to do to get where Tyler Downs is going to buy some greenfields or whoever's going to buy, like Jesse Hill, who wants to buy a house that has a cracked foundation and scrape the thing and build another house, I mean, Bud is the only person on that 30th Avenue that's taken that, those lots and made them into something that looks decent. They're long, narrow lots, they're frame houses, they're falling apart, and I'm not saying every house in the city has to be scraped, I'm not saying that, don't take that wrong. But there's parts of the city, like down near Richard's Heart Estate, where you've got 900, 600-square-foot homes that have been painted and painted and painted, and they're rentals, and there's nothing there that's attractive about them, and they have a crummy clientele because they're rentals. And those are the properties that somebody has to acquire, scrape, and build, and build something new. And so all I'm saying is that, and Jesse said the same thing, if he wanted to do that corner lot right now, the process is he has to go to the Board of Adjustments, and that's going to be $500 or whatever that fee is to go do it. And you've heard from Guy Naimiash, and you've heard from other builders, when they hear BOA, they won't come in here because it's not a guaranteed, and developer wants some kind of a guarantee to be able to build. And I don't know if this is true or not, but when I talked to the developer out of Sprouts, and I asked him, I said, "Are we going to be able to build, why are you building assisted living units at the Sprouts location instead of owner-occupied townhouses?" He said that our parking requirements were still too high, they required too many parking spaces, and that took away the ability to build more units. So I'm just telling you what he told me that night of the public hearing, because I asked him, "Why assisted living versus owner-occupied townhouses or condos?", and he said it was because our parking requirements were still too high. So I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what he told me that night, you could ask him, and he stood there right there and told me. So...
I know that one of the impediments for them in doing multifamily was the charter restriction, right? It's still subject to that 21 DU per acre and 35...
Parking?
That's not what we heard. We heard it was just the density limitation.
So then, the other thing, last thing I was going to mention is, on the signage, we've talked about this more than once, that we'd like to look at icon signs and be allowed to have icon signs where, instead of just being, you know, eating Joes, it's a coffee cup and drinking Joes. And somehow, those weren't allowed for a while because they go on a pole usually, and with their, their way to attract people, make a destination. Are we going to address the ability to have icon signs along with and not be counted as the sign square footage? Like the cat place over there on 38th and 44th we used to have, and some of those icon signs?
Yeah, certainly, you know, as we sit down with council and give you a list of things that we could look at, we think should be looked at, we can certainly have that be part of it.
So does council see what I'm saying, though, about the residential? And I'm trying to bring this up because, you know, Genevieve's fairly new and Tim, this isn't a bash on anything other than let's get it fixed so we can avoid the BOA, avoid a lot of brain damage, and if Urban Manu or the Housing Authority has to use some of their funds to scrape and clean up, and then the developer comes in, buys the property, there may be a loss of funds there, but it starts that process going for the private investment, and that's what I've heard from more than one developer. That's my dog and pony show.
Ms. Wood.
I do agree that we need to start looking differently at how we're going to attract housing to our city, and I do agree, it has to be streamlined in some manner. And in addition, I think it's really important that when we go forward and we look at policy going forward, that we're very cognizant of what the future renter or homebuyer wants in the next 20 to 30 years, because it's not generally what we have right now. The future homebuyer or renter wants the smaller units. They want close to bus stops, they want close to public transportation, and study after study after study talks to this. So in regards to density, in regards to our pedestrian plan, in regards to our bikes, bike pedestrian plans, it's really important that we look very closely at what our future residents are saying they want and have shown they want in other communities, and that we pay attention to that. And sometimes, in our city, it seems like we don't want to do that because it means change. And what you're talking about means change, and I personally support it, but I do think that we need to look at it as a community, that some people are going to be very much against it, but that we do have to look at what are the future homebuyers looking for, and if we want to attract those families, not only renters that might want an apartment or a condo or a townhome, but also the homeowners. They may want the larger, modern home on a smaller lot, that's exactly what they're looking for, with walkability, with parks, with all the restaurants and all the other things they want. And that is what studies are showing that the future homebuyers are looking for. So I support all that you're looking at here, and I'm really interested in the accessory dwelling unit information, that what other cities are doing and what that would look like for us. And I do support a policy going forward as to what our housing is going to look like, and it could be a big change from what we've had in the past.
Okay. Sounds like there's a lot of agreement about the proposed changes, and we've had a few more added. Is there anything else we want to add, Mr. Starker?
I'd like to make a consensus that we direct Mr. Johnstone to move forward, as we've discussed.
And as we discussed, meaning adding the additional items, right? Looks like I see a lot of heads going, and I'm seeing a show of hands, that sounds good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
That was item two.
Two A, two B, Ms. Scott, we have another staff report, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to real briefly run over the memo in front of you here in your packet regarding neighborhoods or overhead streetlight requests from residents. Kind of a little bit of a history here. The city used to have a policy for taking requests and more of a petition process for putting in overhead streetlights per resident request. That was discontinued several years ago due to budget cuts, and this past year, council expressed an interest in reviving that program, put some, I'll call it seed money, small amount, $10,000, to at least try and get a program going. So when the budget was approved, staff engaged in a process to develop a policy, a request procedure, kind of similar to what we did with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program that was reinstated a couple of years ago, or less than two years ago as well. So what we did was we pulled out the request policy that the city used to have, we contacted a few other cities to, you know, see what they were doing, also ran this by Excel to, you know, make sure what we were doing was in line with how they do things too, since they're a big partner in this, and they're the ones that will actually be out there installing the lights. So we did draft a policy up here. It's based on a petition process. We came up with some guidelines for these two, like, for example, street intersections, mid-block locations that are unusually long, maybe areas where there's safety concerns, you know, maybe a hill, a sharp turn, visibility issues and so forth. We wanted to have some kind of guideline in there. So we drafted up a policy here that we believe is pretty consistent with what we've done here and also with other cities, and like to move forward with it. We also have, we also collected a waiting list over the last, I'll say, five years. We had lots of requests, and our response was always, "Well, we don't have the money to do that anymore, but we'll put your name on a waiting list." So we do have that list, so if council has questions regarding the policy, and if not, or if so, we'd like to move forward and contact some of the people on the waiting list and go from there, so if there's any questions.
Scott, you can take Mr. Weaver off, he moved.
Oh, okay.
I got an email back from him today.
Councilmember Davis.
So I have a question. So it looks like we need $10,000 for a street light. So if it's coming out of my lawn, do you want or...
Yeah, it all kind of depends. The 3,000 is on the low end if there's already a light pole there and Excel's already got the feed there.
So I have a quick question. My street's really dark, but we all have it dark. What if, you know, like, because I'm thinking of attracting probably, it's interesting to get everybody involved, it's like all these things like that, I want one, but I don't want anyone in front of that. But if it's like, I don't want a big old pole in my yard, like, what happens, like, if you're putting a pole in, and it's like all of a sudden, you're putting a pole in my yard? I mean, how does that work as far as the location? And how does that homeowner get participation in that process?
Right, well, that's part of the petition process. There does have to be buy-in from that homeowner, not, we typically try and find a pole if it's already there, or if we're putting a new one that's maybe on a property line there and not solely in one person's yard, but even that said, the people that live adjacent to the pole will need to buy in too, because, you know, just as you said, I mean, some people really want more light than there's other people that are totally opposite, like, "No, I want it dark." So the buy-in from all the property owners immediately adjacent is needed on this, so, yeah.
So it's not like 90% of the people get a vote yes, and then you get a pole in my yard?
Just for you, you get a pole.
I know, that's correct, yeah.
I support it.
Ms. Langworthy.
I just, I have one question, and when you're looking at the cost of this, it almost seems counterintuitive to fund this one year with really no idea that we're going to be able to, if we're going to even be able to fund it next year, to get people's hopes up that they may or may not get a light in this process, and then to essentially say, "Next year, there's no money in it." I mean, I agree with the idea of it, but without sustainable funding to it, it feels like we're giving false hope to a system that may not progress past year one.
That's everything we do, really.
Councilman Starker?
This is the year of the state.
Yeah.
Well, I would make a motion that we... Well, I would make, I would make a motion that we, um, move forward with this, um, with this process. Looks pretty, looks pretty good to me. And, and to speak to, to my colleague, you know, if we have the policy in place, maybe we'll, maybe we'll think better about funding it, or maybe we'll, we'll get a windfall somewhere and have the, have the funds available to, to keep it up and enhance it in the future.
But didn't we already have this policy in place? We just haven't had the money to use it? I'm good with the policy. I just, I, I would really hate for people who've waited five years for a hope of a light to find out that it could be another 10 years before they get it.
Don't lie to you.
You know, but we may, we may have, we may have a clog at the tunnel.
Councilman DiTulio, did you have something else?
This is voting, yes.
Okay. If I may ask a question, the vote's fine. None of, none of the lighting that we have is, um, energy efficient. Uh, we're not able to make that switch over because it would take the whole city, or just, is there any, any explanation on that?
Yeah, it would just be for the, these new lights installed, whatever, and, and it's, being Excel would be, these would be lights maintained by Excel, just like all of the other, uh, streetlights that are, um, that are standard, standard fixture like this. But it would be their, their standard head, which, um, I don't know if they've updated that lately based on energy efficiency. And, uh, I know they have a dark skies initiative too, with those high-pressure sodium lights, you know, that have lit up the sky and so forth, so...
But they haven't gone to full LED yet.
Right.
They're, they're looking, they've been getting pressure to do that, so.
I believe we're done with, with this item?
Yes.
Let's move on to bicycle and pedestrian improvements, item three. Mr. Goff or Scott, who's going to talk on this?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, we'd like to talk about some proposed, uh, projects we have in front of you for, uh, 2015 for our bicycle and pedestrian program. Uh, you may recall, last fall, we budgeted $100,000 for, uh, bike-ped improvements. Uh, staff has gone ahead and, and, uh, put together a list of, uh, projects that we think are doable, that are important based on, um, several, uh, criteria we looked at. We looked at the bike-ped master plan. Um, one of the things we like to do too is, because cost is such a, um, concern and thing we have to deal with, is, is can we leverage these and do them with other projects like, uh, our, our paving projects, our overlay projects? So, uh, that was one of the things we, we looked at. Safety considerations, uh, you know, we get a lot of input from PD or what, what's happened out in the community. Um, the, uh, Alternative Transportation Advisory Team, which, uh, gave some comments here earlier tonight, uh, did a survey. We get a ton of input from them as well, and they're, they're kind of an eyes and ears for the community, uh, for us as well, as far as, you know, seeing what the community wants and needs out there. And then also, we look at the, uh, regional considerations, uh, you know, the Jeffco Bike and Ped Master Plan. We're, uh, always in contact with our colleagues in Arvada and Denver and Lakewood to see what's going on on their end, and see if it makes sense to try, um, something in conjunction with what they're doing. So, uh, we put together this, uh, table that's in your packet. It lists, uh, several projects. Uh, we have, um, kind of some estimated costs on these two, a brief description of what we're proposing. Uh, we also have a priority, a rank on these that goes from high down to low. And, uh, one of the things I want to mention too with this priority ranking, uh, ones that are down to medium or low, it doesn't necessarily mean that we consider those less important, but, uh, uh, one of the things we're, we've considered too is, is doability here in 2015. We know that some of these projects, like this Oak Street Bridge, we're, uh, still working on plans. We, we have some, you know, things to work out with Lakewood on that. There's, uh, Approach Path that has to meet, you know, ADA requirements and so forth. We know there's a lot of design left on that, and we probably can't deliver that this year. So, um, that's part of the rationale that goes into the priorities here too. Um, and then also attached here is a map showing, uh, where all these proposed projects are located. So, um, in summary, we, there's, there's a lot of different ways council can go with this. Um, you could stick to the 100,000 and pick and choose, you know, which projects you'd like to do. Um, you know, we could consider going over that some and, and finding some other money to do, um, additional ones beyond that. Um, or, or consider even delaying some projects to 2016, which, um, you know, one or two on here could easily be done. So, uh, with that, just open it up for questions, comments.
Mr. DiTulio has had his hand up first?
So I, uh, had a chance to talk to the AT, AT group, and I would tend to agree with their recommendation that we would do all of the high projects, but then replace, um, number five with number seven, because number seven would, would take care of the sharrows in, on 35th Avenue, and that's where Denver is moving forward with their program. So Denver and Weveridge would be connected at 35th with the sharrows, even though it's a medium, and then we would do all the high projects. So I think they mentioned in their memo that it would be $116,000. We'd have to have a budget amendment of six, $17,000. But it would make more sense to do the 35th Avenue, that's the, and replace that with, replace number three with number, um, no, number five, replace number five with number seven. And I would support a budget amendment if we had to.
Okay. Um, one other thing I wanted to add too, and this, this kind of goes into the timing and, uh, ability to deliver in 2015 too, is, um, some of these projects will probably take more public process than others. Uh, you may recall, last year with Pier Street, we did a pretty, pretty extensive public process with that, a, a couple of, uh, um, neighborhood informational meetings, a lot, and, and part of that was Pier Street. There was a lot of, um, uh, parking needs there, and we really had to juggle with that. And, uh, um, the projects we have this year, I'll use 32nd as an example, it doesn't appear that parking is quite an issue on that, but, uh, we don't really know that till we get into it. Um, same with 35th Avenue, and, and also with 35th, um, Denver is working on plans, um, in their part of the city, and, and we don't know where they are with that yet. We plan on meeting with them within, within the next month or two. So, um, from a timing standpoint, yeah, we'd like to get out and do these as quick as we can, but till we start diving into them, um, yeah.
Sure.
So, Mr. DiTulio, you're supporting the AT, AT recommendation? Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for bringing this forward. Uh, I had a couple of, a couple of questions and an observation. I wanted to know, when we look at, and I, I also agree that, that 35th Avenue is, is a, a good, um, a good road, or, or a good bike lane. What I would hope that instead of stopping at Teller Street, we would, we would turn it a little bit to the north and go down Teller to 38th Avenue, so that we could deliver bicycles right into the heart of our new downtown area. So if you'd make a note on that. Um, on 32nd East of, between Wadsworth and Sheridan, is three times the price of 32nd Avenue West for less, uh, for less length. And, and when, and when I read your description, it doesn't look like we're doing anything with the curb and gutter or the road section at all. So, and I know, Ms...
Right, yeah, I, I can explain that, uh, mark and chip in if I miss something here. But reason for that is, uh, the 32nd Avenue West going west, west from Kipling, the striping is essentially already there. Um, because there's very little, if any, parking there, we, what we were proposing was, was making it no parking and converting that shared bike parking lane just strictly into a bike lane. So the, the striping's already there, we would just add in the, the symbols, the signs and so forth. Whereas, uh, 32nd, um, east of, east of Wadsworth, there, there is nothing there right now. So we'd be looking at full bike lane striping, that's, that's why that, um, the estimated cost is so much more on that one.
What is the approximate cost per yard? Is that how you, is that how you price striping out?
Right, a price per foot. I, I don't know what we used for that.
Um, it's, it's a couple of dollars per, per, um, square foot is how we generally price out the striping. So if it's a four-inch stripe, then it's, we get three feet for the price of that square foot.
So it's, uh, 33 cents a lineal foot?
Yeah, something along those lines.
Something along those lines. 30 or 40 cents a lineal foot.
Another thing on that, on that east side is, we're overlaying from Harlan, or from Pierce to Sheridan, we're not overlaying from Pierce to, um, Wadsworth. So we've got to, we've got to actually remove some striping in that area and redo some things in there. That's part of what drives that cost up. And that, that east side also has the striping plus the logo and the sign and all the stuff that goes along with it. So we've, and we've got some areas we've got to re-stripe in there, but because we're overlaying that eastern piece, that's why we sort of, I'm an opportunist. So, uh, we have an opportunity to do something there now that, that, that we'll lose in, in the future. To remove striping is almost as much as the cost to put striping down.
Right.
To do it in a way that doesn't end up with what we had on 38th, um, during that re-striping job. So it's, it's pretty tough to get it removed in a way that doesn't leave that phantom line behind, and so...
So we might, what we might be able to do then, if I hear you correctly, is to, is to, in our rebuilding of, from, uh, you said Sheridan to Harlan?
Right.
Um, then we could get it, we could get a bike lane there at no, kind of no cost?
Um, from Sheridan to Pierce, actually, it's just the cost of the, the striping, the new stuff. We don't have to remove any striping because we're overlaying that, so all the existing striping will be gone.
So we might be able to get that in your, in your overlay budget?
Right.
Well, I would, I would certainly support you putting that in your overlay budget, and then we get, you know, we get Sheridan to Pierce, and now, and then we've got a bike lane, you know, north and south from Pierce, so...
Yeah, and the $40,000 is, is, we've looked at what overlay would normally do, which is the centerline striping. This is the additional stuff for, to add bike lanes to the overlay. So, um, you know, certainly one option is just absorb some of these things in the overlay, but we, we price this out as this is, if you want bike lanes, this is the extra it takes to get to the bike lanes.
Yeah. Well, I think it would be good to absorb that, and one more comment, and then I'll, I'll be quiet, is, um, 38th Avenue and Tabor Street, we have sidewalks noted in there. I want to, I want to go on record as thanking you for putting some pedestrian, uh, features in our bike and pedestrian plan, because I think that's very important. And, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that does sort of relate to a school or an educational institution, so this would be part of our Safe Roads to School program?
There's, there's, there's a lot of gaps on that part of 38th. This is one that was identified in particular because a, a young man was hit, hit there and killed by a drunk driver, um, last year, and so this was identified. He was walking nearer the street than maybe would have otherwise. With drunk drivers here, you know, know of what you're going to do is going to prevent a fatality, but, um, certainly that is the reason this one rose up pretty high on the list.
And these will be four or five foot wide with a vertical curb and gutter, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm dying to add that I am particularly pleased to see that as well, because I know that there's been quite a demand for some students to walk on there. Uh, I don't know which one of you had, you had it first? Fitzgerald?
On, on 35th, it says you're going to do slurry work anyway, right? And so you would be re-striping 35th in any case, right?
Actually, 35th doesn't get bike lane striped in it. What's called for right now in the plan is just sharrows, which is what we have on 40, on Pierce, north of 44th Avenue, it's just the signage plus the share of the road symbol on the, on the pavement. Um, from what we understand, Denver's pretty early in their process, they're going to invite us to, like their kickoff meeting. The same consultant that's working on the Wadspell is also working on Denver's plan. And so that was why we put that. We think that's important too. It's identified very highly in our bike-ped master plan, but we just are not sure what Denver's going to do yet, so we thought we could, if we get money next year, that'd be a great project for next year, because Denver will have, have either just completed or, or be working on implementing their plan at that point. So that was why we had 35th down as a moderate. We think it's important, um, but we thought, we want to take that opportunity we have on 32nd to do what we're going to do. And if they slurry 35th, I don't know that there's a centerlane stripe on 35th today, so we'll just go back into 35th next year potentially and just slap the signs up, put the markers down, and, and be good to go with that next year, if, if that's where council wants to go.
Yeah, I, I would support, well, pending what you, what you find out from Denver, but...
Correct.
It would really be nice if we could sort of echo what they're doing. Right, and I just wanted to reiterate what Mark said. We, we say sharrows on here, but I think until we, we have the conversation with Denver and see what they're doing, um, you know, that remains to be seen. Plus, you know, talking with the residents, the public process, making sure we're addressing any other needs such as parking.
I had Ms. Davis next. Are you guys going to fight it out down there?
So, I just have a quick question for, um, I moved my, uh, so for the 32nd Avenue West and mid, I mean, I've noticed that a lot of that seems, like, it doesn't seem like a lot of space for those bikes. There are a lot of its gravel. Um, so does that, are we taking, we're taking a part of that? Because I know you said, "Well, the lines are already there," but that's pretty narrow lines and kind of gravelly.
Right, the, uh, the midsection there from, uh, Kipling to Wadsworth...
Yeah, the mid, that part's gravelly.
Yeah, yeah, what, what we're proposing to do there is actually widen the road out as much as we can and absorb that little extra asphalt in the overlay project. And that will enable us to, to squeeze in some bike lanes. They may be a little narrower than ideal in some spots, but, uh, um, along with that, with the re-striping of the roadway, we would, we would narrow the, the travel lanes up to 10 feet, which also helps with the, um, calming the speeds on the road as well. So, um, that's what we have in mind there.
Okay, so it would look more like the west side?
Correct.
It's a little, okay.
Mr. Starker?
I had one, uh, one other quick, uh, request. Um, at 35th and Pierce Street, uh, when we, when we think about the, the, um, the new 35th Avenue bikeway, uh, I've had a request from, uh, members of the AT, AT, and other members of the public to consider a four-way stop there with flashing lights, um, also to sort of enhance the safety on Pierce Street.
Right, and that, and that's something I think we'd want to, we'd want to do a traffic analysis on, because the, um, MUTCD, the, the state federal guideline we go by has specific warrants for stop signs and, you know, especially for four-way stops, there's, there's specific warrants for that, whether it's, um, you know, traffic counts, uh, accident history and so forth. So, I mean, we could certainly engage in that right away and see, see if it meets warrants.
Ms. Wood?
Uh, my first question is, and I apologize if you mentioned this before, on item number two for 30, 44th and Miller at the school, for that amount, what, what is that going to look like, that crosswalk?
Um...
Is it just on the ground, or is it the flashing lights?
It's the flashing lights. RFB stands for, um, if I can get this right, recta, rectangular rapid flashing beacon. So it, it would be a, a higher-end model from what's out there now. It's, it's, uh, the one we have right now is, is an older unit, and we'd be upgrading to one of the more...
Is it about a timer for school times, or is it something they press?
It's a push button, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Same facility that we have at Upperman 38th and Benton at 38th that we put in there for the school. So it's that same, that same kind of, the exact same assembly. We just take the assembly down, all the stuff in the ground stays the same, we just put the new assembly up.
Okay. And then I'd just like to say that I support all of items number one to seven, which would cost, it looks like, about $1.60, but I understand you're talking with Denver, and that would address item number, uh, seven, item number seven. But as we go through this year, this calendar year, if we could do items number one to seven, some feasible way, um, even with an additional budget request, I would support that, to get that done. And then, I know we've talked about this before, but, um, sidewalks from Kipling, on 38th, from Kipling all the way to Youngfield, we're addressing part of that here, but evidently to do that, it's a lot of drainage work. And do we have an estimate on that, or any, I think that should be a priority for us in the next, you know, several years.
Right, you're, you're talking the whole stretch from Kipling to, um, Youngfield. Yeah, I, it's, like you say, it's hodgepodge at best. There's, that whole, that whole corridor needs help, and, and, um, I'm not sure we've There's, that whole, that whole corridor needs help and, and, um, I'm not sure we've really sat down and, from a design standpoint anyway, and really looked at a, a good estimated cost of what that would do. But it would, it would be significant if we really wanted to upgrade the whole thing.
This, this predates Scott, but I think one of the dirt projects that we had identified way back in the day was to, to do that, was to take Thirty-Eighth, three lanes, put the storm drainage in and get sidewalks on both sides, the whole deal. But I don't, I don't know if, I know that we've looked at those numbers and they're, they're considerable, because it's, it's rebuilding the entire road. It's going to be in the, the five to ten million dollar range probably for all that.
Uh, let's do a quick review where we're at so far. We're, I believe I've heard enough consensus as far as items one through four plus item seven, and there's been some smaller additions to that regarding running to Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Um, and you had included five. One through seven. Which would add another, um, twenty-four thousand. All right, so, uh, I had Ms. Langworthy. Sorry.
Man, so, so I know that we talk about the, the flashy light at Forty-Fourth and Miller and, and while I appreciate that, what I, what I see being strangely vacant on that street that all of our other schools have is the, the speed reduction on either sides of the schools that let drivers know that they need to drop their speed from thirty-five. Although I, I, living on Forty-Fourth, I doubt most of them drive thirty-five. But to drop their speed limit down from thirty-five to the twenty that they're supposed to do. Pennington has one, Prospect Valley has one. Um, I, I don't know of us, I know Stevens and, and the middle school have them. I don't think Everett does, but it's right off of Kipling, so I don't know how that works. But I mean, Forty-Fourth doesn't have it and Pennington just across Kipling has them. I mean, I think that if, if we're, we're indicating that they need to slow down and be aware of a flashy light, then it's easier to stop from twenty miles an hour than from forty-five to fifty, which is not unrealistic to see on that stretch of road.
Are you referring to near the schools?
I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking right by the Forty-Fourth and Miller. I mean, we have that flashy light and it is fantastic, but you don't have on either side of it the, the, the flashy light that says you need to start slowing down, that the speed limit is twenty miles an hour in a school zone and we don't indicate that on that in front of the schools.
Right, and that, and that's something we could actually look at separate from this program, because it's more of a, a signing issue on Forty-Fourth and, and we've talked about that. We've got those speed indicator boards up there now, but it could be a matter of just posting it a speed, school zone or even with that sign that's there already, um, you know, with the note, the lower speed when children are present, that kind of thing. So we could do it either way.
I think that you need to do different than just the, the flashy board, because, because the problem inherently is, is if they come to the flashy light, and I live on Forty-Fourth and I watch people ignore that all the time, and the fact that one child got hit is amazing to me, because there should be more, um, the way that people drive on that stretch of road. But at Prospect Valley, when you're, when you come up to it about a block before, on either side of the sign, block and a half before either side of the school, you have a kind of sign that has a flashy light on it that the, that gets scheduled to kick on during school times, that flashes that this is the morning time when it, when kids are going to school, this is the evening or the afternoon time when they're coming out. And you put that on either side of that crosswalk, it slows people down in the area and makes it a little bit easier for them to stop in the event that somebody does press a crosswalk.
We'll, we'll look at making this a school zone in there, that will accomplish that.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Davis?
I would like to get a consensus to approve all of the budget items listed and then also some of the recommend, and the recommendations provided by A, by the AT&T group. Well, they're one through five, some of it is already included in there.
One through four?
Four and six.
One through four and over seven.
Right, but they have other recommendations that they'd like city staff to look into some budgeting. So that's what I was referring to.
Yeah, I, I want to mention also, uh, when you look at these estimated costs, um, um, I think all of these, one through seven, with the exception of the, uh, flashing beacon, are all striping related and, and we plan on wrapping those, um, those in with our overlay project to get prices for the striping there, so, and I think we'll be opening bids for that, what, within a month or so? And so we'll be able to refine the cost a lot more once we get those bids in too. So that might be helpful if, if, uh, if the budget becomes a concern and we're looking at one through seven, you know, if we want to eliminate that east part or however council wants to look at that.
Didn't I hear that item number seven was not really viable to two thousand and sixteen? Uh, it's on both of those, I've got it.
Just depends on the Denver process. We want to make sure that we, we shadow the Denver's process and so we'll, they're, they're inviting us in the next few weeks to start talking about what we're going to do. So it could happen.
Yeah.
But we can, we'll continue working on that if you, if there's consensus to move forward.
We can keep moving forward, knowing that it's going to happen either this year or next year.
Yeah, it may not happen till next year.
Councilmember Pond?
Before we wrap this up, I do have a, I do, um, have a question related to the Oak Street Bridge. The, the cost estimate that here, that's shown here, is it a shared cost between Lakewood? Or is this our share or is that a combined cost?
What, what Lakewood had originally proposed was, um, split the cost of the bridge, which is estimated about forty thousand dollars, so it's twenty grand each, and so that twenty grand's in this budget. Their side doesn't need a lot of work. Our side has a very non-compliant path coming up the hill, and so we've actually got to put three or four switchbacks in to get up the hill to meet ADA, because once we touch it, we've got to bring it up to standard. And so that's the cost for this. We've got to, we've got to move a bunch of dirt and pave a bunch of sidewalk and, and do all kinds of fun things. We've designed it such that we're avoiding walls, but, um, we've got to have handrail along all of it, because it's going to be a, a, a handicap ramp kind of, kind of slopes and those kind of things, so.
So, uh, and I'm not suggesting that we move it up necessarily in priority, but I don't want to, if, if Lakewood is, is actually actively considering it, and I know from firsthand that, of what the safety issues are over there, so I'm just want to make sure that, that we're actually staying in step with Lakewood and, and participating in that you don't need any dollars at this point in order to, to stay in the conversation, because I don't want to miss, miss an opportunity to progress the design and be, and have a chance in twenty sixteen or seventeen to actually implement something.
We'd like to find a way to help, to see if they'd want to pay for some of our side, since our side is so much disproportionately larger than their side.
Yeah.
Cost-wise.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you. Um, I for one would like to see us focus on items one through four, because that keeps us within our, our, uh, budget of a hundred thousand and it is the, the highest priority areas, and I do believe Thirty-Second Avenue, uh, is a, a critical area and, and the schools' zones are important. So I would like to stick within the budget that we have previously approved and be able to, um, meet the highest priority areas and the school zones and Thirty-Second Avenue would be those for me, so, uh, that would be my take.
Uh, one of the things that the AT&T mentioned is, I know we're trying to look at Denver here for Thirty-Fifth, but this is a highly traveled road by the, the neighborhoods and the residences, so I think that even if you did the slurry overseal there and you did the sherros on Thirty-Fifth as part of this project, that would, it'd be better than nothing over there in that part of town. So I still would like to see us do the one through four plus number seven, and even if seven was building on something from Denver, but you had the sherros and maybe you added lanes later, but, uh, one of the things that Thirty-Fifth is, it's, Bud would know, it's kind of like our green belts in districts one and two, or District One, especially Thirty-Third, Thirty-Fifth, you got a lot of people walking and biking. What's that? By the park. So I think anything that we would have to denote bike lanes will be for a safer, not just for the bikers going from Denver to Golden, but in that area. And like Bud said, they can come down Thirty-Fifth and go down Pierce to, to Thirty-Eighth, so. I would still like to see something happen on Thirty-Fifth possibly this year if we could, even if it was just the sherros, as you do the slurry seal.
Ms. Langworthy? Go ahead.
If I can just, if we're going to not do the east side of Thirty-Second, I'd like to only not do the east side from Pierce East, because otherwise we end them at Wads and they can't connect to Thirty-Fifth until they get to Pierce where the bike lanes are.
Good point.
I'd, I'd hate to have a gap in there, because Thirty-Fifth doesn't come out, we, we've got a gap between where Thirty-Fifth and the Thirty-Second and stuff would stop.
So you're feeling as though it would be quite a hardship to not to complete it and do the Thirty-Second Avenue?
Well, just, just at least the western third of that east third.
Okay, western third of the east third, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think we ought to just go ahead with the entire Thirty-Second and not try and break it into bits and pieces.
I believe there was some savings with, well, as the overlay was going on, that you had mentioned earlier, so it's be fairly important, and I appreciate your-
One more thing, this is my thing, and I know we don't, don't want to get into details, but the Thirty-Second mid part doesn't have a sidewalk, and I, I would really hope that you could extend that pavement to include a little bit of walking space, since that's the way people walk to Wheat Ridge High School.
They're writing it down.
Well, we had, we had a lot of comments.
Yeah.
I think we need some consensus on-
Yep. All right.
One through seven? There's, okay.
We got one through seven? What happened to five?
You're checking with Denver on seven and how that's going to-
It's something-
Right, right.
All right, now we have an over of, uh, we have funds that we need to allocate. And Mr. Starker, you had another question?
I, I just wanted to, if we're on number seven, that we don't just stop at Teller Street, but we continue down Teller Street to Thirty-Eighth Avenue.
Right.
And that you'd bring forth a budget amendment if you needed it.
Yeah, we'll work through this and if we can have some cost savings through our, um, overlay project, um, we'll just go here, we'll play it by ear and if we go over, we'll come back.
I have one additional thing.
Next, Scott.
Um, is there any plans to remove any of the bike lane signs that are currently on Pierce? Given the significant number of them, it seems like there's one in every yard.
Yeah.
I understand that there's a need to notify people that a bike lane is now existing on Pierce, but it does seem a bit excessive in the number of signs.
We're going to pirate those signs and use them on Thirty-Second probably.
Yeah, great. We, we think we can use them better somewhere else, yeah.
You thought you were going to take some home, no.
Hand me a wrench on the way home, I'll take a few down.
All right, so where we're at now is we're going to go one through seven and they're going to come back with some cost estimates and see what we have to do with budget. Okay, can we move on to item four?
Okay, Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. Uh, just wanted to give council an update on where we, where we are with that. Um, council reinstated the program back officially last April. Um, kind of similarly to the streetlight program, we, there were people on a waiting list, uh, with, uh, traffic calming requests, so we did contact a lot of folks. Um, actually, we've had a lot of inquiries. Um, there, there is a petition process here of several stages, so, so, so sometimes the, um, you know, we get the inquiry and we get the information out and it, and, um, nothing really happens from there, because it is resident-driven, this is driven by the citizens, so, um, so we've had some of that. And then also, um, we have on a lot of these gotten the necessary five signatures to, to actually start a process, so we've had, uh, several public informational meetings on, uh, several streets. Um, some of these, uh, people are, um, there, there's kind of a broad consensus. They'd like to see speed humps or traffic calming. Uh, others, when we've gotten into the public meetings, it's just kind of, um, um, you know, the desire for that kind of thing has waned. It's, uh, uh, part, part of the, what we do at the public meetings, it's a good educational, um, opportunity too. We have police, our police department come, um, John Pickett, uh, Jim Lorenz, some of those folks, and they do a great job of, um, telling the folks really what's going on on their street, because they respond to the complaints and they know if there's really speeding or a problem out there or not. So, uh, sometimes, uh, people after hearing, hearing, uh, comments from the police and our traffic data and so forth, they, uh, they realize maybe they do, they're not sure if they really want speed humps or maybe there's something better like improved signage or so forth. So, so sometimes out of these meetings, we, um, that's really all the further it goes. Uh, you know, the speed trailer, we're, we use that quite a bit. Uh, we have, uh, a petition that, that did come in on Balsam Street. Council will be considering that at, at your regular meeting a week from today. Uh, we have a couple other areas, I believe Ammon Street, Teller Street, there's, there's some petitions out there being circulated around, so, um, so we haven't really engaged in actually building anything yet, but we're still, um, early in the process. We just got the program going. Uh, the public process does take some time too, and I think people are kind of finding out about the program. So we're expecting this, uh, to pick up some, uh, within the next couple of years as, uh, as we get more information out there and people, um, uh, get their petitions out. Um, and then I also want to add it too, that, um, uh, we also included, uh, an item attached to your packet here, um, kind of rehashing some of the things that we talked about, uh, a year ago last fall, um, kind of related to the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about monument signs and I think there was, there was, uh, some, um, interest expressed by council, uh, to talk about it, at that again, and so we can certainly open that up here to, this evening and, uh, talk about that and what other, other questions you may have regarding the, uh, Neighborhood Traffic Program.
So as far as speed bumps, that's kind of working itself out as far as the neighborhoods are concerned?
That's correct.
And some more, it's more about the monuments and the side signs.
Uh, Scott, what's the status of the Teller Street? There was going to be a speed bump on Teller between Thirty-Eighth and Thirty-Fifth, I believe?
Uh, that's correct, yeah. My understanding is, uh, there's, there's a petition being, we did send a petition out to the, the neighborhood lead contact. Still working on it, yeah.
Ms. Davis, you had something?
Yeah, I just have a question, because I know, uh, this is going on in my neighborhood and we to, we spoke a little bit about Balsam. And I know one of the things, you know, has been discussed is the speed bumps or humps or whatever you want to call them. Um, and there's always a little bit of concern about noise and, and those types of things. But, I mean, is there the option of, like, the islands? And I, and I know, uh, earlier you had said, well, I don't really like the islands, but I guess, to me, I do think the islands on Forty-first work pretty well to slow down the traffic and, you know, it's the islands that kind of come out, so you have to kind of slow down to get through them. Um, so is that an option on Balsam or a discussion?
Yeah, I mean, the program isn't limited to just speed humps, of course. I mean, the islands, curb bump outs, those kinds of things are certainly options too. And, and we do bring, um, you know, mention that as options at the meetings too. And, you know, if the, if the neighborhood, the residents want to move that direction, we can certainly look at that. But, uh, as far as Balsam Street goes, it seems like it was focused mainly on the speed humps there.
But did, I mean, is that because that's all they know? Or what, I mean, I know you said it was presented, but, I mean, how was it presented? Because I would think that neighbor, I, I, you know, knowing that neighborhood, I think that they would think that the, kind of the cutouts might be beneficial to them and, and I know a lot of folks on that street would be willing to water newly planted trees or whatever it might take to keep, you know, the island looking nice or whatever it might be. I mean, like, how is that process? Is it, we can do A, B, or C, or is it, okay, you guys said you want speed bump, so here's the story?
Yeah, well, I think we, we mentioned the options and, and part of it with a certain street too, is, is there already concrete curb and gutter there? Uh, how does the drainage work? I mean, the, the, the traffic islands, uh, bump outs take a little bit more work as far as engineering goes and, and trying to find out where they fit and so forth. Um, you know, we do explain that to people, but if they want to move forward with that, that's-
But I mean, I guess, again, this is my neighborhood, but wouldn't that make the neighborhood look more appealing? I mean, when you go and you see the, the curb, I know it's probably more expensive and it's more, you know, we have to look at the drainage and that type of thing, but, I mean, doesn't that create a nicer-looking neighborhood than these big old bumps in the middle of the street? Um, I, I don't, I, I guess the way you just worded it didn't make it sound like, if it were me, that I thought would think it was an option.
Yeah, no, I think that's more of a, I would call it a qualitative, um, desire of the neigh, of the neighborhood if they want to do that.
Councilmember Starker?
Are the, the speed humps that we're talking about, now we've, we've got some in District One, kind of on Teller Street down around twenty, twenty, or Newland down on, you know, Twenty-seventh, Twenty-eighth, and they're, they're kind of like the, the deluxe, you know, they're six or eight feet wide and there's, they're, they're patterned concrete, if I, if I recall, as opposed- I think when you get to the other ones, they're- Some, some, yeah. Yeah. Are we looking at the, are we looking at the top, the, the top quality concrete ones? Or are we just looking kind of at an asphalt hump there?
Well, we had been presuming the, the asphalt, we have both in the city. I, but that was more from, I think, a cost standpoint. They're cheaper than the concrete ones and the colored concrete and so forth, but, um, that's certainly an option. I mean, we've, we've got both all over town.
I didn't know if there was a significant difference between the two or not.
Councilmember Urban?
Thank you. Um, with respect to the speed trailers, I know on, uh, in the meeting, uh, with respect to Ammon Street between Forty-Fourth and Thirty-Eighth, there was discussion about putting speed trailers there. And, uh, after that meeting, my understanding was there was a street, speed trailer placed on, uh, Ammons, but it was placed towards the end of the street as opposed to in the middle, where people would already be slowing down. Is there a, hm? It was the wrong direction as well. So, um, my question is, what, what thought goes into the placement of that with respect to where the highest speed of the vehicles might be?
Yeah, that one, we, we did act, we, what we do is we put the speed trailer in both, both directions and, and the one, yeah, was, was probably placed, placed a little too far to the end of the street and we did, we did adjust that. Um, I know at the time that was going on too, we were having a couple of these snow events too, so, uh, the timing, you know, it got mixed up a little bit, um, but, uh-
And has there been any, uh, and, any reach out to the, uh, school with respect to the parents that are coming to and from, uh, the school on Ammons with respect to their speed at all?
Yeah, I, I'll check with our, uh, police department representative. They have a liaison to the schools and I'll see if they pursued, pursued that further, yeah.
Okay. Um, I think that's the only questions I have.
More questions or discussion? I don't know, is there a conclusion that we need to come to? Because we, we've got reports here of what the, uh, the possible costs of, of the monuments is on the side or the- Go ahead, Mr. Starker.
Are we going to move to the, and I'm, I'm sort of glad that we, that we see it's Neighborhood Traffic Calming and the entryway signage program. So we're going to talk about the entryway signage program, because I noticed that on some of our memos, it's, it kind of gets lost.
Kind of got lost.
Kind of gets lost. So, um, I had, um, I'm, I'm, I would like to sort of move, move forward. Now, we had, um, and, and talk about the entryway signage, and actually I've got a little, uh, a little handout for everybody, there may be enough to go around. Um, I, I took a look at, uh, and had staff send me the, um, we did new signage for our parks that, that looks sort of like this, and I'm sure you've been, been using our parks and seen the new signage. Looks very, looks very handsome, it's very uniform. Um, I think, um, I was hoping that we might take a somewhat different, you know, a similar vocabulary, but maybe a little different geometry. Maybe it's a circle or something like that, but it's essentially a small sign. It's about four or five feet, uh, five feet wide, similar construction to the signs that we have, so that they sort of relate and that we're able to, um, to get a car- And that we're able to, to get a cost, to give you an example, the, the signs that we, that we did in this size were, were probably in the four to, four to five or four to $6,000 range each. So they were considerably less expensive than the, than the masonry-based monument signs. So it would seem like they'd be more cost-effective and there would be sort of a similar, like I say, a similar vocabulary to the, to the signs that we've been using. So I wanted to see if we might generate some consensus to, to maybe pick up eight or 10 or 12 of these. I think the locations, we had some, some good locations shown, I haven't really studied all of those. But, you know, and every, every counselor would have a better feel for where in their district might be good ways. But what I'm thinking of is that, kind of when you come into the city, when you come into Wheat Ridge, that on our, on our more minor access roads coming in, that you get an identifying sign that says, welcome to Wheat Ridge. Not a terrific cost impact. And this is the kind of a, of a sign that if we're able in the future to, to work it into some traffic calming, I think, you know, in our district, Mr. DiTullio, maybe down at 29th and Sheridan, you know, if we put a little median or something in the, at the entry to the city, that might be able to use in conjunction with this, so.
So you're thinking more of a, of an identification sign, less of a traffic calming? Or that it could move into that?
Yeah, but, yeah.
This wouldn't.
And I completely support this, and I think it's a great idea that we move forward with it. And part of it is in District Four. I think it's going to be really important that we designate over where the gold line is going to end, where that station is going to be. That, maybe this is just wanting to be proud of your city, but they know the gold line ward station is Wheat Ridge, it's not our fella. And if there's signs over there, that would help identify that. And then also coming in under Garrison, it looks like there's some opportunities there too. So, I mean, if these are cost-effective, that we can do within our budget, that we appropriate it, I'd be interested in that.
Okay, any other comment on this suggestion?
And I think we had, what, $100,000 in the budget for traffic calming and signage? So, you know, depending upon what we've got allocated sort of in, in traffic calming, maybe we could take some of the money that's left over and, and do 10 or 12 of these. I would be thinking, you know, maybe when you come off of I-70 at Youngfield and you come into, is it into Taco Bell or something there? You know, that might be a good place to put one and. Well, when you get off of I-70. Not at Ward.
No, Youngfield, by Taco Bell.
Right, you go straight smack into Taco Bell?
Yeah. Well, it's Youngfield, it's south of 32nd, it's.
Christie wants the $100,000 for Balsam though.
Well. We fight later.
Remember what he said earlier?
If there's consensus on that, we can bring back a plan for what the sign could look like. And is there consensus on the, kind of the design of the?
I propose that we have a consensus to move forward with the signs that Mr. Starke has proposed and a budget and placement of various places in the city.
Looks like we're all in favor, thank you, Mr. Starke, for that suggestion. I'm sorry. Well, we will next time. How's that? All right, I believe, have we gotten through all the?
That's the agenda, yep.
That we've gotten through the entire agenda. Elected officials' reports. I see a hand back there.
So as many of you may have already heard, the Mountain Phoenix School, due to some complications with the Jefferson County School, was not able to move forward with the Fruit Dell Project. But due to kind of bad or good publicity, depends on how you look at it, there is a, another interested party in the property. Someone who has extensive experience renovating buildings of such nature. Pretty amazing, so if you, if you're really, really interested to kind of see what he's done, you can look at the agenda packet from our last meeting. But he, we, because he, he didn't complete it in time, he wasn't part of our original discussion. But now that the original discussion fell through, he's gonna present more details on how he believes he could actually get that project completed. And so it'll be very interesting to see what he can do. So I would just, if you're, he's turned like a, a refinery, kind of a sugar processing plant into lofts. He's done an old school, he's done an air, the hangars. He's made hangars into living quarters and retail. So, I mean, he's really got some experience in taking an unusual property and making it usable again.
What's the proposal to be used as a commercial building?
It hasn't, he has to determine what he's gonna do with it. Because unless it, I mean, the school, the reason why the school worked was because of the reverter clause on the property. If it doesn't have an education piece, then the reverter clause has to be undone and.
You'd have to condemn it, the board?
It's, it's, it's gonna be his problem. But, but at this point, we're at least kind of having additional discussions about the property.
Okay, so giving us a preview, so to see the movie, we have to go online, okay.
I would just say, if you're interested to see what he could do, you could go online and look.
Okay, thank you very much for that report. Schoolism or?
I would just like to say that, that Wheat Ridge High School, the winter percussion group, which is only seven kids, won first place in their division in their first competition on Saturday. So it's not a big group, but they won first place.
Very good. Ms. Davis looked like she was warming up over there.
So I just had a quick question or request. I know Mr. Urban and Mr. DiTullio are holding a meeting on Wednesday. And I know a lot of it's gonna be on TIFF and questions and answers on TIFF. And I'm just wondering if we could perhaps get Cory there to help answer questions if there are questions that might need to be addressed from a urban renewal standpoint.
Is that a request of the council or is that?
That's a request of.
Yeah, I can ask, I mean, if that's what council would like, we can, we can make that request if he's available.
I mean, I just think that, I mean, he's an urban renewal lawyer and it's probably best to answer a lot of those questions.
Well, we're hosting the meeting, so he can contact us if he wants to, if he can attend.
Well, yeah, my understanding is from the, the announcement that was made at the last council meeting that. Yeah, everyone was invited, so I would like him there.
Mr. Starke, are we, are we satisfied with that one? That, that you're gonna try to get Cory?
Yeah, I can, I mean, I, it's a request by Ms. Davis, I mean, I don't see, I didn't see, hear too much from anybody else, so.
Well, it's Mr. Urban and Mr. DiTullio.
Are you comfortable with that?
I mean, I'm just making that request from an urban renewal standpoint, because they are discussing those types of issues.
As our representative.
Right.
Mr. Starke, you attended, actually, you and I both did, a UAL panel discussion.
We, the Urban Land Institute held a technical advisory panel, so that's ULI-TAP on the gold lines at the Ward Road Station, Ward, Wheat Ridge Ward Road Station?
It's our station.
Wheat Ridge Ward, Ward Road Station. One of the interesting things that, you know, you, you sort of think about, the, sort of the classic transit-oriented development, and a lot of times you think about, oh, we're gonna have some, some nice apartments and residential properties and retail going with them. And, and when the, when the group of, and there were developers and realtors and leasing brokers and architect and, you know, a number of other technical, technical people, when they really looked at it, it, it turned out to be more of an employment, employment, employment-driven development scheme. And while it took me, it took me a couple of minutes to get my, my head around it, I think that's really a good thing. I think, you know, there's a lot of industrial development and light industrial development south of the station. There's some, there's some good areas north of the station. The Jefferson County Economic Development Council, and I sit on that board, has the Forward Jeffco Initiative and has identified about eight sectors where they're looking to bring in development. And one of them is in outdoor apparel and, and outdoor living types of things. Another one is biomed and, and aeronautical stuff. But I think particularly if we could make that, you know, think about, about moving in the direction of a, a nice business park that, that brought in outdoor, outdoor gear, you know, snowboard makers, outdoor apparel makers, those types of things, maybe some clean high-tech. A chance maybe to do some incubator-type stuff. I was actually sort of spinning in my mind this morning, maybe, maybe you do an incubator building and you bring in sort of some, some machinery that can be used in common by all these guys. And maybe that, that sort of helps us incubate some new growth industries that are clean, that, you know, Wheat Ridge is seen to be a mover in recreation and clean recreation and mountain recreation. And we, we try to focus on those, that kind of, you know, going to the mountain and recreation activities. And that I think we, you know, I think it's really exciting to think that, that we may be able to bring that. And I think if we were successful in that, that, you know, that entrepreneurs that come would want to live, would want to live in the neighborhood, so that drives the residential. And once you drive the residential and you got the employment base, then you're going to have the retail and the business community that supports all of that. So I was, I was pretty jazzed about it by the time we got done with it, so. Keep your eyes peeled. And Mr. Urban and several of us were there, Mr. Fitzgerald was there.
Mr. Fitzgerald, did you want to contribute to that?
Uh, well, I want to talk about something else, but that was really, it was a mind-bending experience and totally different than what we had expected. So I support what Bud said. What I want to do is congratulate the theater department at Wheat Ridge High School. I had family who went to the production of Oklahoma, and they thought it was fantastic. Unfortunately, I was babysitting, so. Well, I should, anyway, it makes you proud.
Great, do you want to add to that?
I was just gonna mention, we got a communication today at school that indicated that the Board of Education was gonna go with the, the proposed Sobeski move, seven to 12. And there really wasn't any mention of the alternate plan that had been presented. So I've heard that from the superintendent, and I've also heard it from the email that came out today from the principal, that that seven to 12 and then Sobeski moving over to Stevens was the plan that they were gonna present to the Board of Education for approval.
They proposed it last Thursday, and then the board will vote on it this Thursday. And as part of the Jefferson Plan, they'll redo the boundary between Wheat Ridge and Edgewater. So there used to be a little bit of a screwy boundary over there. And now if you live in Wheat Ridge, you would Arctic to Stevens and then to Everett and then to Wheat Ridge High School. And then if you lived in Edgewater, you would go to one of their elementaries and then over to the 712 School at Jefferson. And then the second part was that the gifted and talented program is now being moved to Everett Middle School, so Everett has the gifted and talented program. But the other parts of the proposal were, that Plan B, as it was called, were, are not going to be considered. And that the Sobeski, the proposal was to move it over there and they're gonna vote on it. And I did talk today with Brenda Carlson, who's achievement director for this area. And so we're gonna get some information out to the public, depending on what the vote goes with. And, yeah, we'll have more information.
Well, and the superintendent wanted you to know that they took some of the ideas from the recommendations, which was making the articulation area all Wheat Ridge, depending on where the people live. So that's been a problem in the past, because Wadsworth was dividing line for years. And you went to Jefferson or Wheat Ridge High School, now it's all gonna be Wheat Ridge area. So I, I think it's a win-win. Sobeski is gonna, they're also talking about adding 70 students to Sobeski. It's, so they'll have more of a central location for those students to come to.
What is the, what is the, what is the current Sobeski population?
It's 80 to 10, 80 to 100, depending on the day. And I, I sent an email to the superintendent today to ask for clarification. There's been some rumors that, that they're gonna double that population at the school, but we're not sure if that's 100% true or not. So we're trying to get clarification on exactly what the expansion plans could be for Sobeski.
And that particular school is, is, all the students are bused in. And so it's not the drop-off that, I would say that Stevens right now sees, that those students are bused in from other locations. So it's, it's a different format of their day, and it's a different how, way that they operate. But it's my understanding right now that all those students are bused in.
And for the, for the Wheat Ridge, it's, it would be pre-K through six at the current Wheat Ridge 58 School?
Right, the Stevens Elementary would move into that, and it'd be pre-K through six.
Pre-K through six? And that would be bilingual emphasis? And is that just English, is a second language only, or are they teaching Spanish to English speakers?
Now, that I would have to clarify, I'm not aware of that. That is, they do have a gifted and talented program, but as far as what their Spanish program is, I know they have a program and I don't want to give it a label, but I do know they have a program.
Yeah, but they all, all the schools have ESL, which is English second language, even Wheat Ridge has that. But it's not gonna be a Spanish-only or second, secondary language for English then.
Right, but I mean, would it be affirmatively teaching Spanish to English speakers, starting at pre-K? That's what I'm getting at, and I think that would be a great attraction for.
I know what you're talking about, and there is a program for that name.
Because when I read the, when I read the, when I went online and read about the Jefferson program, it seemed like it was, it was, that there was second language instruction. And I just didn't know whether it was only sort of Spanish to English instruction or whether it was also English speakers learning Spanish.
I can look into that for you.
Thank you.
So that, like I was mentioning, they did say the population is around 100, and then it could be another 60 or 70 students that would be serviced by Sobeski with the newer facility. So, and like Jenny says, they're bused in, so it's not like it's gonna be a huge deal, but they're. Oh, it's gonna be one through 12, that's Sobeski, so.
Okay, anyone else? Did you want to add something?
Yeah, just on the ULI study regarding the Ward Station. I think one of the things that came out of that was a distinction that that isn't necessarily the end of the line, but it is a base camp between downtown and ski town. And if Golden is the gateway to the Rockies, then Wheat Ridge is the base camp for the Rockies. And it would play into this outdoor manufacturing type of situation. I think that that would be a, a good way to, to frame that development. Or, and not necessarily to say anything else couldn't come in there, but in order to give it some vision. And that was one of the weaknesses that was indicated, that we currently don't have a strong vision for what we want in that area. And I think that isn't come on us to come up with what that vision looks like. And knowing that we need to come up with something, that's a good starting point, given the current industrial uses in that area, as well as some need for additional housing. Hoping that it is more in the owner-occupied version as opposed to the addition to additional rental market housing. But we'll see where it goes. But I was very intrigued by the information that was presented. And I really appreciate the time and energy that went into coming to that, because there was a significant amount of resources and expertise that was given to us, and I appreciate that. And then one other thing, on Yarrow Street, there's a hearing on the 5th of March. What, is there any opportunity at that hearing for anybody other than the property owner to speak or?
This is, this is a hearing in, in court, it's not administrative hearing. So anybody can, can attend, I don't know, I can check. I don't know if the judge allows witnesses on the other side. The city will testify on the city's behalf, but let me check on that.
This is regarding a property on Yarrow Street in the 4500 block that has been in a dilapidated and significantly blighted state for, for more years now. And the neighbors are more than fit to be tied. And there's been significant effort on the city's part to do what they can to provide extension after extension to the property owner to construct whatever is being constructed there. But it's gotten to the point where, in my mind, it needs to, there needs to be some finality to it. And so I'm looking forward to that hearing.
So am I. Got a pretty active group, let me add a few things. You did mention the, the housing that they, they are, that ULI was looking at in that area. I was starting to, okay. In regard to construction defects, of course, we have, we did our own resolution. I have signed one via Metro Mayor's, I've also contacted both Senator John and State Representative Danielson regarding encouraging their participation in, in getting that legislation passed. I'm also working with the Metro Mayor's. in, in getting that legislation passed. Um, I'm also working with the Metro Mayor's Executive Committee, uh, talking to county commissioners regarding the, the handling of TIFF monies. That seems to be that we need to have some conversations with those county commissioners. Uh, on a, on a lighter note, um, Saturday, this Saturday, 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., I'll be having a coffee with the mayor at Care Bear. Um, plenty to talk about going on in our city. I, I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, there'll be some good attendance. I'd been requested to do one on Saturday. And one last thing, businesses, please shovel your walks. It's just, um, uh, important to give, ask those customers come in the door to, and I realize the snow is, is melting a little bit now, but, but it is, it is really, uh, you know, we don't have rules or laws, but, uh, we, we do want to be considerate of our citizens. We're asking them to walk and bike, and, and they, the ice and snow in front of the doors or in the streets is just terrible. I think that's all. Does somebody else have something? I'm sorry, Larry, did you have anything? Thank you, and good night, and what?
Zach, do you remember that? That, Zach, that address, was it 45?
The clerk. Oh, the clerk. Did I miss you? You're good? You're so quiet there.